Board of Education meeting, November 9. It's now five, five, seven, and I'd like to call this meeting to order. Let's see, Mr. Margot, could you lead us, please, in the pledge of allegiance?
Sure will. Please stand.
Put your right hands over your heart. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mr. Margot. Okay.
So we'll have to approve that without...
So I'm going to make a motion to approve the agenda minus item seventeen B.
Can I have a second to that?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Wells. We've been seconded to remove item seventeen B from the agenda. I'd just like to make a brief announcement and then tell the community that we have voted four to zero to make Mr. Gabe Halimi the provisional member of the school board. And unfortunately, he wasn't able to be here tonight. He's out of town. So he will be sworn in at a later date. And I want to thank everybody again for their interest and time in applying. We just had to pick one. Unfortunately, we couldn't pick them all. So, thank you again. And Dr. Brighi.
We need to vote on the agenda.
Yeah, vote on the agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Let's see, report of closed section, session, action in this closed session, Dr. Brighi.
Thank you, President Marcus. There is no action this evening in closed session.
Can we approve...
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. We did vote. I'm sorry. Hang on one second. I apologize.
Revised report from closed session.
Yep, hang on one second.
Coming at you.
Thank you.
I thought we had.
We did. Sorry. Hang on one second. I got rid of that number.
I have it right here if you want it.
Sorry, I have it right here. Thank you. So I apologize. The Board of Education has voted four to zero in favor of OAH case two zero two one zero eight zero three nine five.
Thank you very much. Okay. Well, now it's our wonderful time of the meeting where we get to meet some of the students or the faculty, and I turn it over to you, Dr. Brighi.
Thank you. A very exciting time for us. And at this time, we are going to celebrate and recognize our school psychologists and our psychiatrists, or psychologists, who are uniquely trained in our schools to assess our schools. They have a vital role in our schools. And Ms. Chisholm is going to help kick us off in our recognition of our school psychologists.
Thank you, Dr. Brighi. Good afternoon, Board of Education, family and friends. I believe we have some of our school psychologists signed on. I was trying to read that. I asked them to join us. Has I seen Ms. Paige Rubin there?
It's actually National School Psychologist Week this week, November 8th through 12th. And thank you, Dr. Stern, for bringing that to our attention. And we would like to just highlight and publicly recognize our school psychologists for the great and outstanding work that they've done during our pandemic in our, at home, home learning and just transitioning back into in-person learning. There were so many turns and changes that happened during this time. And our team really stepped up and did a magnificent, outstanding job in supporting our students. You know, overnight, we had to figure out how we were going to assess students for special education and related services remotely. This is something that happens in person. You have to watch behavior. You have to interact with the student. And this is something we've never done before. And overnight, we were told we have to do it remotely. Then we were told everything's on hold. So we stopped for a little while. Then we were told, oh, it's not on hold. And then you have to also make up all the ones that were due during the time we said they were on hold, but we're not going to give you any more time. Our team didn't miss a beat. We came back to in-person learning eventually, and we were, we had a backlog of assessments. And the team at all of our sites worked extremely hard, the special education team led by the school psychologist. And we were caught up with all of our assessments by the end of the school year last year. Some, some sites had an excess of twenty-five backlog assessments. And we are not, we are now caught up, and we were actually able to do some additional assessments and get ahead over the summer. So we have one of our school psychologists here.
My last name is Paul again. They missed everything. They text me that it was muted. I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry.
Okay, so Dr. Brighi, didn't hear Dr. Brighi either.
They didn't hear anything. Just on Zoom, not on Kaba, just on Zoom. So all the people who were honoring the psychologists, they didn't hear anything.
Okay, so let's start again.
Kaba's got it.
Okay.
Here they are. Hi.
I believe they're up.
So you guys, I was talking and you couldn't hear me. So I'm going to start again. So there we have, there we go. I was wondering why the cameras are popping. Welcome, ladies. I was saying that we just wanted to publicly acknowledge you for the outstanding and magnificent hard work that you did during the pandemic, during our home learning, and then returning back to school in person. One of the things I forgot to mention is that some of our school psychologists were some of the first staff members back, working with our students in person, conducting in-person assessments. I, I referenced, you know, when we went into home learning overnight, we had to figure out how to assess students virtually. And this is something that we've never done. This has always been in person. And our team figured it out, you know, down to calling publishers and saying, how can we, how can we adapt our materials to use them virtually? So we just really wanted to acknowledge and thank you for the things that you've done for our staff and students during the pandemic. And I know, Shadi, you were going to talk a little bit just about how your roles as school psychologists changed a little bit during, drastically over the pandemic, and then kind of transitioning back into in-person instruction. So if you could go ahead and let us know, and then we'll wrap up.
My name is Shadi Sahirpour, and I'm the school psychologist at Hawthorne.
Hold on one second.
Turn it up. We can't hear you.
All the way. Okay, go ahead, Shadi.
My name is Shadi Sahirpour, and I'm the school psychologist at Hawthorne for TK through five and our district-wide preschool program. It is a pleasure to be able to speak to you tonight about our amazing psych team. When schools shut down, we moved quickly to provide services remotely. We called and connected with families immediately to provide resources. After schools reopened, we noticed a much greater need for social-emotional learning for our students. The psychs took it upon themselves to increase our services. We realized more than ever how staff and families were relying on our skill set to provide support. Our role has really evolved more than just an assessment, but it's also to provide support, direct support, and consultation to parents, teachers, and other school staff members regarding interventions for students with social, emotional, and behavioral difficulties. We are in the classrooms providing more consultation on broader classroom management systems and individual reinforcement systems. We are continuing to work more closely with our administrators in helping develop intervention programs. I, along with our preschool teacher and district behaviorist, have helped strengthen and revamp our preschool busy bees program. It is an intensive behavioral intervention program. We are also brainstorming and educating our teachers and staff during SST, Student Study Success Team, on how to properly implement a multi-tiered support system. SST is not just a pipeline to an assessment for us. At Hawthorne, in addition to classroom social-emotional teaching, we are developing Friendship Fridays and Team Building Tuesdays. It is to help students who feel alone to be able to reconnect with one another. During these programs, I, along with two other special education teachers, facilitate social interactions and help foster friendships through team-building activities and fun exercises. As psychs, I like to add that we are also providing more reassurance to our team, to the teachers, to parents, and we are very happy to do it. We are very happy to be here tonight. And lastly, and one of the most important things I like to say to my colleagues and to everyone here, we are providing support to one another, and we are collaborating with each other on a daily basis. I am so appreciative, and I admire my colleagues, and I'm so thankful to be part of such a wonderful team. So thank you to everyone, and thank you, Board members, and Laura, for recognizing us and honoring us and our hard work. We really appreciate your time.
Thank you so much, Shadi. That was very, very wonderfully said, and it kind of summarized what's been happening. I'd just like for our team to introduce themselves really quickly, just and say what site you, what site or sites you serve, please, and then we'll wrap up. So we'll start with you, Raquel, because you're on the top of our screen, please.
Sure. Hi, I'm Raquel Karangong, and I'm one of the school psychologists at Beverly Hills High School.
Shadi.
Hi, I'm Shadi Sahirpour, and I'm the school psychologist at Hawthorne.
Dr. Hunter.
I'm Dr. Evelyn Hunter, and I'm one of the school psychologists at the high school, and I also service the nonpublic schools and occasionally the private schools.
Mrs. Rubin.
Hi, Paige Rubin. I'm one of the school psychologists at Beverly Hills.
Debbie.
Hi, Debbie Rishaw. I'm one of the school psychologists at Beverly Hills Middle School, and I also service the private school students.
Thank you so much. And then we're missing one, one psychologist from Horace Mann, Afoah Paul. She wasn't able to be here today. She had some activities with her own children. So I'd like to just ask you to join me in giving a round of applause to our team. And I would like to let you know that this team conducted over six hundred assessments in a year. So six school psychs over six hundred assessments. So thank you, ladies. We honor you and we appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Chisholm. Any comments from the board members? Mr. Reimer.
I just wanted to say thank you for all of the amazing work that you all do. I know that it's very important to the students, and they really do benefit from it. So thank you very much.
Dr. Stern.
Thank you, everyone on the board. And Ms. Chisholm, I am so thrilled. You're my people. I do this on a daily basis, except for Tuesdays, because I'm here. But I will say, and I think you guys can appreciate this, sometimes people don't necessarily understand what school psychologists do. Often, what we do, maybe, well, at least in my work life, about, I'd say seventy-five percent of what I do are very lengthy assessments that spend a lot of time really getting to know a student on every different level, and we're held to a scientific standard, so that we're using a lot of standardized tools. We have to know how to score them. We have to know how to interpret them. We need to know the laws. And we also need to make sure that we put together information so that an IEP, which is an independent educational plan, can be put together for the benefit of that student. So while there is counseling, a lot of people think that school psychologists are primarily counselors. Not, not really. They do that, but a lot of what we do is just, you know, assessments, which can take per student, you know, six to seven hours. And then you find you want to redo something or follow up with another test to verify a thought you have. So I really have always respected this profession for the intellect it requires, also the, the human element of caring about our students, and you guys all do that so well. I know that, and I'm grateful, and I'm so happy you joined us tonight. And now get back to writing those reports, because I know you are. I will. Tonight I will be. Thank you.
Mr. Margot.
How can I follow that? All I can say is years and years ago, I was very good at giving the Woodcock-Johnson assessment.
I'd just like to express my appreciation for all of our school psychologists and the support that you've provided our students and families. Thank you, Laura Chisholm, and to Board Member Dr. Amanda Stern. It's really, just, I just have enormous appreciation, especially given this past year. So thank you.
I'd just like to add my, echo my comments of my colleagues on the board. I do want to remember something. When I came into the district a long time ago, that not every school had a full-time psychologist. And I think that we here in Beverly Hills are very blessed to have a full-time psychologist at both of the elementary schools and two of them at both Beverly Vista and the high school. And I, I think that that just shows how important that particular position is to our students. So again, thank you for the report tonight. I really appreciate it. Thank you, Dr. Stern, for bringing it to our attention that this was the psychology department first. And you have something more to say.
I also want to add, our job would not be possible without the assistance of the special, other special ed teachers and the special ed staff, and also the wellness center, which is not special ed. It's, it's counseling. I mean, those, we work hand in hand with those people, and it's, they need to be recognized as well. Thank you.
We recognize you tonight, but we know you work all year long.
President Marcus, I just wanted to ask Dr. Brighi a question. Because of what Dr. Stern said, and because of the wonderful work that our psychologists do, mostly in testing and assessment, we have access to both the Maple Center and at the high school, the Norman Aid Center, to help students in crisis and to work on that aspect, which has been exponentially, what's the right word? Exacerbated by the pandemic. Do those resources trickle down to the middle school and the elementary schools as far as Maple Center and Norman Aid Center help? Or is there like a Bulldog Aid Center or things like that?
Well, they do now, more than ever before. So we did give some time for our middle school to get off and running, to see what type of support we needed, besides having our school psychologist and our, our three counselors there. And what we've been doing is with our services from the, from the Maple Counseling Center, but also the Norman Aid Center as well, is how does that fit? And what does that look like in a middle school setting? Because it does look a little different. And so we've already started steps into providing services. We had a lot of services during the pandemic that were via Zoom, and those were very popular, including even sessions with parents. Now that we're back in person, we're showing up a lot of those services now in a different setting than we've ever had before. But yes, so all of those services are starting to, to trickle down as well, even into our elementary school. And even at the elementary school level, we're starting to look at, how do we make some of the services, like from the Maple Counseling Center, a little bit different than what we've done before with some of the, the classroom settings? We've had some of the group meetings in classrooms, and we're starting to change that up a little bit, make that a little bit more relevant. But we are providing, those services are all working together, TK through twelve.
Thank you, sir.
Sure. And I just want to say thank you as well really quick, because I remember when we were negotiating the MOU, and, you know, it was our school psychologists that were the very first employees to come back. And I remember having conversations with Laura and some other staff members about, you know, how can we do this? you know, how can we do this? Let's look at some other school districts. We got a lot of feedback about how to do this. And as we were doing that, the cases were, you know, kind of mounting up. And so, I just want to really extend my appreciation for all of you for what you did, not only to catch us up, but be among the first staff members to break through a lot of those barriers and fears about coming back. And you were really instrumental in helping us put new protocols and practices in place, not only for you coming back with doing assessments, but then for the rest of the staff as well. So, a sincere thank you to all of you.
Thank you, Dr. Brighley. Okay, it's now time for public comment. I have one person who'd like to speak. I'd like to recognize Ellie Frankston. If you're there, Ellie, I'm ready for you to speak.
Hi.
Hi, Ellie.
Good evening, distinguished board members. My name is Ellie Frankston and I'm a senior at Beverly Hills High School. I suffer from celiac disease, meaning my body cannot digest or tolerate protein found in wheat called gluten. In doing research for an independent project, I learned that few public or private schools offer gluten-free meal alternatives. In speaking with fellow students, many have said they would benefit from having more allergy currently options at school. Our school offers free and reduced lunches. Quite possibly, lunch my daily students only meals of the day. We should not make broad assumptions, because our city has a reputation for excellence. My goal is to improve food services in our district and to advocate for students like myself. In addition to the free lunches in their cafeteria, the other option for snacking at school is vending machines on campus. Vending machines are a quick and easy way to grab a snack, providing you don't have any dietary restrictions. Some of the snacks found in the machines often are pop tarts, chocolate chip cookies, cheese zits and teriyaki beef jerky. Usually, the only gluten-free items are different flavors of potato chips. Students with dietary restrictions should have the same varieties snacks as students without. The potato chips are nutritious or filling. Almost one quarter of the world's population, nearly 2 million people, follow a gluten-free lifestyle for health or other reasons. This is where the BHUSD can set itself apart and attract students from other schools who do not offer other friendly alternatives. According to the Rehabilitation Act of 1973, kindergarten through 12th grade undergraduate and postgraduate schools, both public and private, recipients of federal financial assistance, must comply with both the ADA and Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973, which prohibits discrimination on the basis of disability. Celiac disease and severe allergies qualifies as a disability and should therefore be treated as such. Overall, the food choices in our schools will much be desired from the perspective of proper nutrition. They don't fall under the recommended guidelines. Protein is an essential nutrient and sugar needs to be limited. So, an overhaul of our food offerings at school needs to happen and quickly. The Beverly Hills Unified School District can make this happen. I've compiled a list of alternative foods that I'm happy to share and are available for discussion of the subject. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, moving right along. We have a staff presentation from the Director of Food Services, Mrs. Angelie Villaflore, and Heather Ayama, the Director.
Would you let me share the screen?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Don't think about it.
Don't think about it. Thank you.
You got it, Nick.
Let me see.
You don't know.
Always need to. Hold on. Let's see. Where is the presentation?
Where do you have it open?
It's on the left.
Right here. Go back to Zoom. And then click on this up.
Oh, there. I can't see.
Yep. No worries. And then share. You got it. Good job. That's it. Good luck, ladies.
All right. How do I get rid of the thing on the side here? Thank you, Ms. Darson.
Oh, I don't like, yeah, one.
There you go.
Thank you. Thanks. That was a great segue, actually, public comment into this report. Before I turn this over to Heather, the Director of Food Services, Angelie, the Director of Fiscal Services, I just want to take a moment and just recognize the Food Service Department. And I don't think I've done this since the start of COVID. But when COVID began, that department, those group of workers, the Food Service Ladies and Gentlemen, they were there from day one, giving out food to our community. So, they were never remote. They were at school sites from the very beginning and were there the whole time. So, we need to recognize them. Because of all of our employees, they never worked remotely. They were there giving out food to our communities, our students, our families. So, it's really important to remember that as we get to the end of COVID, hopefully. But tonight, we want to talk about some of the opportunities and challenges around our Food Service Department. We're going to go through some of these items, take some board comments. And we really feel that this is a turning point for Food Services. For the first time ever, we're going to have revenue coming in that we feel that can support some changes to our Food Service offerings. And we can do some of these things that have been mentioned even tonight. So, without further ado, I'm going to introduce, get Heather and Angelie up here to go through this presentation and do a great job. There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you, Wade. Thank you, Wade. I would also like to thank my employees, because we only have 10 people in my department and me. I recently got an assistant, but it was very few of us and we were chugging through and they were coming in and handing out food and lifting and pushing and pulling. It was a lot of work and I'm really proud of them. So, with that, I'm going to go to What Is Seamless Summer? So, normally, we serve with National School Lunch Program. And that's based off of free and reduced, like, free students get free meals, reduced students get reduced meals and full pay, pay the full price. So, prior to COVID, our numbers were pretty low, maybe average about 600 meals per day. And now, we're up to about 1,600. That's not including breakfast, 1,100 breakfast. So, by the, because of COVID, we had, they offered us to do Seamless Summer, which we can feed children without checking IDs. We can just feed the children that need it. And it's been really helpful to us, because we just go through the line very quickly and we feed, our numbers have skyrocketed. So. I was not talking, I feel like my kid. Thank you. And so, pretty much, why is it important to BHUSD? Is now all meals are free for all children regardless of income, which is really helpful. Even, you know, even if a parent can't afford a food, sometimes it's just hard to pack a lunch. And by having food at school, it's been really helpful to the children. They're really, they seem to be really enjoying it. The cafeteria lines are packed every day at lunch and breakfast. We serve breakfast at nutrition time or recess time. And as I said, all students have equal opportunity to receive free meals. And then, the best thing is there's no negative charges on student accounts. Prior to COVID, I was about $20,000 a year on negative charges that weren't paid back. And we weren't required to collect that money. We could, we could try, but we couldn't force anybody to pay it, because if they can't pay it, you know, we have to allow that. Okay, so. And so, I wanted to go through a few things, like, because school food isn't what it used to be. We're not just, like, giving kids, like, a piece of pizza only. We're like, we're trying to promote, like, if we give a piece of pizza, we're going to try to promote them to take their fruits and vegetables. Every meal should be served with fruits or vegetables. A lot of kids, sometimes they may not like their fruits or vegetables, so we have to get creative. So, some of the things that we're doing are like slushies, which are fruit, like 100% fruit juice pouches. They're like four ounces. They're considered a fruit serving. But they'll take that over carrots or apple slices. And then, some kids like the fresh fruits and vegetables. We have little packages of fruits and vegetables that go along with the meals. So, this is just kind of a breakdown of the meal pattern we're supposed to follow for each grade level. So, each meal has five components. And the components are fruits, vegetables, milk, grains, meat alternative and milk. So, I can let you guys read that. All foods must be baked and not fried. That's something that has, you know, that change happened, like, 10 years ago. I put this in, because I've had parents approach me, like, "Why are you serving my children Trix? It's so unhealthy." But if you look at the, like, the nutritional components, Trix actually has less sugar than Chobani, which is more visually appealing to adults. But what I'm trying to do is I try to give kids food that they want to eat, that they see, and then they realize, "Oh, this is cute. This is fun." And so, like, you'll notice, you're going to see, like, more fun yogurt at the elementary school. And then, you're going to see, like, more adult-style yogurt at the high school. Sometimes, if I'm low on supply, I'll just do whatever yogurt I can find. But this is kind of how I try to do it. And so, right here, what school, there's a lot of products out there. So, pretty much, school food is created to appeal to children while meeting nutritional requirements. It's not there to appeal to the parents. It's there to appeal to the kids and the kids want to, they want to have to eat it. And that's another thing I found out, like, sometimes I'll put food out there that I think is nice as an adult, but these kids are like, "No, I don't like that." And so, I always have to think along the kid line, like, what are these kids going to like? Okay, so, I've already kind of gone through this, but these are the meal components that we need to provide. And so, I'm just giving you guys an overview of this. And some, you know, some grains. Grains are breads, crackers, muffins, pasta, rice. Meat alternatives, chicken, turkey, beef, nuts and soy products. I do not purchase any pork products in this district. I, because I don't think it's, it would not be a good idea here for our community. So, I try to just stick with these items for protein. Fruits and vegetables, we all know what those are. And then, milk, we offer 1% white milk and chocolate nonfat. This kind of is kind of a quick breakdown, like, how we're supposed to serve the food, like, what makes a healthy breakfast. So, technically, there's all these components that are available. But two, a breakfast must include two of the components and one must be a fruit or vegetable. So, for instance, like, a whole grain cinnamon roll, something like that. The kids like it. The sugar isn't as high as one of those cinnamon rolls you find in the store. But it tastes good. That's a two grain. And then, you can add the fruit and that's like a breakfast. Also, pancakes, mini pancakes, those are two grains. Then, you would add the fruit. And then, what makes a lunch? So, the way we do lunches is there's the five components and a child must select three of the five components to have a complete meal. And one must be a fruit or vegetable. So, a hamburger is like two components of grain and two components of protein. If they take a fruit juice with it, then they have their complete meal. But they're welcome to take more, like milk and extra fruits and vegetables. Like, I've seen children with, like, a hamburger, but then they've got apple slices, carrot sticks, chocolate milk, a whole, you know, a whole apple. They have a very large tray full of food. And then, the next kid behind them has just a hamburger and a juice, but that's their choice. And that's the best thing, is they get to choose. And so, they're hopefully reduce waste by letting them choose what they want. But again, children come up to me, like, "I'm still hungry." I'm like, "Get more fruits and vegetables. Get more milks and juice." And that's what's been happening with this pandemic. And, because we used to sell a lot of à la carte. So, now, the children are actually coming back and taking more fruits and vegetables, which is really nice, actually. Where before, they would go for à la carte food that isn't as healthy. And then, I'm going to let Angelie go on to here.
Good evening. Here, we're going to talk about the revenue that the Seamless Summer Feeding Option brings us. I can't remember the program's name. So, prior to this program, we didn't have any breakfast. So, all of the participation that you see there, that's 1,170 new meals per day that we didn't have prior to this program. Lunch is now at 1,660 per day. Prior to this program, we were only serving 640 total. So, that's about four times more per day that are participating, which also brings in about that much revenue in, well, yeah, a lot of revenue for us from federal and state funds. So, we're no longer really relying on sales anymore. So, the total here comes out to 1.9 million in state and federal funding. And later on, we'll go through another slide that shows how that plays into the whole budget.
And I put a little thing down there. Pre-pandemic, with vending machine sales, all of our revenue combined was maybe 900,000. And that was, like, really pushing à la carte sales, vending machine sales. Our federal and state revenue were really, was really small. But with all this food, comes issues. And that's usually me in the top corner. A lot of the times, like, instead of spending, you know, a few minutes on my computer, just pressing one hamburger, you know, like 10 cases of hamburgers, like, now it's like, "Oh, there's no hamburger patties." Okay, well, how can I get those? And, or at the last minute, like what happened to me last night, "Oh, I'm sorry, your delivery is not coming today," which is today. So, now, I have to make a menu change for the next day, because my item's not on the, it's on the truck that's coming tomorrow. So, stuff like that. And it's been like this all over California. And maybe because of COVID, it's also every single school is now serving free food. We all pretty much use the same school food vendor, because that particular vendor has contracts with all of the school food, because we have special food we serve to the kids. So, it's like whole grain and reduced sugar. And it may appear to be unhealthy. But again, it's like, it's food that's designed for, to appeal to the children and this is how we get it through this vendor. A lot of the stuff we get, you can't get through the regular grocery store. Even our Smucker sandwiches are different than the ones that are sold in the grocery store. So, with these supply chain issues, we have last-minute lunch and breakfast menu changes based on available inventory. And my favorite, I get to go to the grocery store a lot, like, yesterday, when I went and bought hamburger buns. So, pretty much, additional time and resources are spent procuring and planning menus when it used to be very simple. So, this is just one of the problems we're running into. So, even when I try to do, like, a special item, "Oh, it's not available." So, then you have to, like, substitute. And then, this is going, so I'm just going to talk a little bit about à la carte sales. Pre-pandemic, we used to serve a lot of à la carte food and that was like maybe 400,000 of our revenue à la carte. Right now, because I've shifted all of our staffing to working on the meals, we haven't had, honestly, the staffing or even the food supplies to put in the à la carte line. So, we're not serving à la carte. We're looking into possibly starting that again. But right now, you'll find most of our à la carte food in the vending machines, as we heard in the public comment. And that's also really difficult to supply, that, like, one week, we have potato chips available. The next week, we don't. Gatorade has been a really hard one to find, because we can't serve regular Gatorade. We have to serve, like, G2 or Gatorade Zero. So, and it has to be 12 ounces. It can't be 16 ounces. So, there's so much little rules that we need to follow that limit a lot of stuff we do. Goods goes into our vending machines. We own and operate 12 vending machines district-wide. Revenue from the vending machine is averaging about 10,000. Pre-pandemic, it was a little bit higher, because I had all the vending machines stocked. Right now, we still have a few that aren't fully stocked. Again, we don't have enough supplies and staffing. We're experiencing delays in shipping and some items are no longer available from existing vendors, causing us to find new vendors that have new, have products or substitutions. So, like, I had to go to a whole new vendor to find my Gatorade. Expenses. As a general rule, we try to keep food expenses at 40% of the revenue. And I've been receiving emails frequently, "Oh, we're increasing our costs because of Tyson." And I've been receiving emails frequently, oh, we're increasing our costs because of Tyson's now increasing their costs. Um, oh, Yang's Chicken doesn't have chicken till, till, um, January, and their cost is also increasing, so it's, it's, um, it's a little difficult right now, but as a general rule, I try to keep food costs at forty percent. Um, supplies and paper goods, I usually try to keep that about ten percent of the budget. Again, supplies and paper goods are going up in price as well right now, and they're hard to get. Um, staffing increase with the, so I'm, so pretty much I need, we need to increase our existing staffing. Uh, we're producing more meals at the schools. Um, and my staff has been working extra time, many of them, that were part-time. Um, so based on this, I'm requesting that a permanent increase in hours of lead food service workers at, and at the addition of part-time food service workers at Hawthorne Elementary School and Horace Mann to assist the leads. Um, at Horace Mann, she's currently working alone, and at Hawthorne, um, my lead is working with an, with an assistant right now, cuz that school is very spread out. And we serve meals across the campus. And then all expenses have increased this school year, but revenue from the meal reimbursement rates will cover these costs. So as I go through, this kinda just breaks down the staffing increase requested.
Is that, is that you also having?
That's actually some of my ladies. They get pretty fun in the kitchen. But it, yeah, I, I, I do get in the kitchen with them sometimes. Um, I thought it was cute. Um, so this is pretty much what I'm requesting and what my people have actually been working. Um, and that's gonna be about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars additional per year.
So, um, looking at the food services budget, um, we have here our current budget, our new budget, and the, uh, cost of the increase projected. So the current budget, um, was developed in May, June, late, late May, early June, and we didn't, we weren't unsure if this program was going to continue. So as we budget conservatively at that time, we just, we looked at prior, prior regular year revenue, cuz nineteen twenty was kind of off too. Um, and then added vending machine, um, projections, so the total revenue we projected as of now was one million fifty one thousand four twenty-five. We took our existing staffing plus, um, prior year, uh, food and supply costs and other expenses. So expenses we projected at one point one million, which left a deficit of a hundred nine thousand, which would be a contribution from the general fund to food services. Now with the summer, seamless summer funding option, feeding option, um, we're projecting a total of two million thirty-five thousand in revenue. And with her proposed budget, oh, I'm sorry, her pro, proposed increases, um, staffing increases, um, total cost would be one point seven million, which leaves a profit of two hundred and sixty-eight thousand.
All right. And then this brings me to the wellness committee. Um, every year, we're required to do a wellness committee, so what I'd like to do is reestablish that, and, um, I'm looking for people who might be interested. Um, it's any wellness policy, um, ideas for, you know, menus possibly. Um, we also can recommend, you know, like wellness policies at schools, like, you know, um, uh, and, and maybe some classroom, uh, teaching about wellness, food wellness for children, that sort of stuff. Um, so I, I'm gonna start doing that, and I think we'll probably send out a notice to try to get some people on our wellness committee. And then for next year, we get to have universal meals for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-three school year. Pretty much this is extended. It's not gonna be seamless summer, but it's, it's something that all of California is doing. So this free meals to all students will continue. Um, and so this is kind of a, a way for us to practice this school year, cuz next year we're still gonna do it. And by getting those staffing increases, I think it would really help us. And that's about it. Have any questions?
Can I jump in?
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, thank you Heather, thank you Angelie. Um, as you can see board, there's a lot of opportunities in, in front of us. Uh, there's a lot of challenges, esp- especially with the supplies of food, uh, going on right now. Uh, but when you look at the numbers, um, you know, you're, you're looking at possibly a two hundred thousand dollar profit. And so we need to look at how we can actually make that profit grow, and then roll that profit back into the program and what that looks like. And there's other opportunities too. Um, I think when we were looking at staffing, um, there was a, a request for a cook position. Folks don't underst, don't know that we actually have scratch cooking in this district. About fifty percent of the food we serve is from scratch. So if we can increase that, I think that would be an, uh, an awesome opportunity to actually do some more scratch cooking. And if, if we have, uh, uh, we have a lot of folks here, uh, I know in, in my office and the neighboring offices, we do DoorDash like three times a week and spend sixty dollars, seventy dollars a week. Um, so in other districts, uh, folks can go and buy, uh, adult meals from the cafeteria, which may be seven or eight dollars, but that would save me a lot of money. And also in other districts, once we get to that point, we have full staffing, uh, we can do catering. So if there's a meeting in Ed Services or in Business Services, we don't necess, need to go to Pen, you know, Pennera or, you know, wherever we go, um, to get food, we can actually have it catered through our food services department. So there's many opportunities. Heather's looking at me like, you didn't talk to me about this. Um, but there's many opportunities to actually get other kinda revenues other than, uh, other than just, you know, vending machines. So we're really excited, there's still a lot of challenges. Uh, but I'm gonna be quiet now and let the board, uh, ask these smart, uh, folks questions.
Okay, uh, I believe, uh, this month it's really, um, Dr. Stern, you're first to, to this month, this meeting.
Thank you all. Uh, I can't imagine with the delays in the supply chain, you know, that we're all experiencing post pande, pandemic, I can't even imagine how that's made things difficult. So I really appreciate the logistics that you are juggling constantly, um, not to mention, you know, the various needs of nutrition with, among kids. Um, one question I had, just sort of a little thing, I, there used to be, I remember as a parent, there was the Titan, um, school, now, is that no longer because it's been supplanted with your, some of the free offerings, or how does that work?
Titan is still in place, and any money on Titan is remaining on Titan and rolling over. Again, once I get, if I, if I can get my à la carte program running, up and running again, then that's where you can use your Titan funds. Or parents can request a refund. A lot of parents have been doing that. So Titan's still running, I still have it, I'm just not utilizing it like I should. So I don't, we're not selling anything on it right now.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Margot.
Thank you. Um, well, this report was a long time coming, I appreciate it. Um, you might wanna type, uh, tap that, uh, student L for your wellness committee. So it might be good to have a student on that committee to advise
Yeah.
from different angles. Okay, a couple of things. First of all, Trix versus Chobani. I appreciate the reduced sugar in Trix, but you should know that Chobani has twice the amount of protein.
Yes.
So, and that's something that's important for people who are eating yogurt for protein. Um, and most teenagers will burn the sugar off, but they won't get the protein in other places, so that's something to think about. Um, thi- this program is continuing for twenty-two, twenty-three. Um, do we know after that?
I think it's gonna continue.
You think they're just gonna keep this, because it's kinda changed the face of food service um, from a, usually a, uh, two hundred thousand dollar general fund expenditure
To like
to a profit thing. So it really, it really ha, I just, I can't imagine it's gonna go the long run, but, um, are we prepared to pivot, or would we have sufficient warning if we had to pivot if they took this funding away? Would we just go back to
We would just go back and
to how we were doing things, might have it, might have to dig back into the general fund for it. Which is what I, what I'd be curious to, to say is, if we do, or if we are making two to three hundred thousand projected revenue extra from the program, is there a place to put that in case, to save for a rainy day, or do you already have that spent weight on apparently your lunches from Panera? So, whatever it was, you said.
So, uh, Trustee Margot, that's a great question. Actually, the, the code is written so that if a food service program actually makes a profit, that money has to go back into the food service program, so, uh, to prevent districts from sweeping it into the general fund. So we would, as a district, wanna put that money back into the program.
Perfect. Um, so that could, that could be a potential solution if down the road they pull the funding for this program. We can have a, a kind of a little, within the food service, a reserve to help us get through, so we don't take just chunks from the general fund.
When we're, when we're periodically audited, they'll look for excess cash, but if you have a reason for holding some excess cash, then, and then they're okay with that, but we, we've never had excess cash in food services, so, uh, this is new for most, most school districts.
Right, I just, I know you said that, that it looks like the, the governor is doing this on an annual basis. So even though it's committed for twenty-two, twenty-three, there's no commitment after that at this point, right?
They hedged their bet when they, when they came out with the budget. They said twenty-two, twenty-three, we, we hope that it continues, but you're absolutely right.
Right.
If the state budget were to take a dive for some reason, this may be a program that they would look at changing.
All right, I just would rather be ahead of the curve and be able to utilize that extra money. The last thing I was gonna recommend, well, I, I, I would say, um, Heather, to the student, um, to her point about the gluten-free and other options, you said you do have supply chain issues and different, and all now your vending machines are filled. Are you looking into her suggestions?
Yeah, I, I've been looking into it. Um, there's a few things we can do immediately. There's also on my webpage for any child that has a, um, allergy or medical need, that if the pediatrician fills out this form and then sends it back to us, then that gives us everything we need to know to, to make a special meal for that child.
Okay.
So if she really, if she would like something very, she can go and get that form filled out by the pediatrician, and we can have something ready for her on a daily basis. Or any other child that needs a s- special dietary need.
Thank you, and my last, my last shoe that I'm gonna drop today is, um, the idea of while we have students enjoying free meals, because, you know, in this town, there's no such thing as a free lunch, right? But apparently there is now. Um, wh- while we have them, I, I would like to advocate for, and it's only one opinion up here, to really focus on nutrition and go along what you're saying about your wellness committee. And we really understand, we all, those of us who are, who are decently educated know what kids should and should not be eating. And if these are the meals that they're gonna get during the day, breakfast and lunch, that are gonna be provided to them, I would advocate that they be an example of what really good diet is, and not what, you know, commercials say a good diet is, because we really know that, you know, uh, diets high in greens, leafy greens, dark greens, broccoli, things like that, low in fatty proteins, very low in carbs, um, greens and stuff like that, are really a better way to eat. So if we're providing food for free, it would be great to say, well, you might get more kids turned into healthier eating, cuz this is their option. So they're gonna learn better habits and slowly transform, we don't have to do it overnight, but slowly transform into the, the more what people really know is the right way to eat. Um, that's my last, um, you know, talk from the stump here tonight, and I will defer to Mrs. Wells. Thank, thank you very much, all of you, for the presentation.
Mrs. Wells.
Well, thank you for all the work you're doing. I just remember, uh, last year, uh, seeing and hearing about the food service program and how wonderful that was for so many families to be able to have, uh, the meals, to be able to come and pick up, and I think it served many people in, in more ways than we may ever know, really. And so I, I appreciate how much work that's been for you and logistically, uh, how challenging it has been. It's exciting to hear that there's opportunity in the food service area, and I, my only recommendation, and I'm not, you know, I'm not speaking from a place where I'm very knowledgeable about your day-to-day, um, would be to use that to really brainstorm about what would be the ideal way to use those dollars to increase your program, to make it a better program. Uh, not just staff necessarily, but what would, you know, what would be amazing to do with our food program? Um, alluding a little bit to what, um, Mr. Margot is saying in terms of education, our better quality food, if we're able to, uh, source, you know, vendors that may have some better quality options. I know that it's a really a challenge for parents when they have little kids. They're trying to send them to school with healthy snack options, and it's almost like they feel like it works against them when at school they're given other options that are against what they're trying to support at home. And as well with, you know, some of the direction they get from school, like please only send healthy snacks and such items, you know, similar items in that vein. And then they hear that they get what they perceive to be unhealthy or sugary items that, uh, they don't understand, uh, why that's happening when it feels like it's working against them. So some of that can be education, some of that can be, uh, creating programs at the elementary level where parents or your wellness committee can get involved and help to, uh, design those programs that everybody can get behind and really support wellness and healthy eating at that, at that age. So I just would challenge you, I'm sure you don't need any more challenges right now based on your presentation, but to just think of it as an opportunity and what, what would you in an ideal world like that to look like?
Thank you. Mr. Raymer.
I just wanna say thank you for the presentation. I know how hard all of you work to ensure that students have, uh, healthy food options daily. Uh, I would just like to second what Mr. Margot said, and I hope to see some, uh, student representation on the wellness committee in the future, but thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, my turn. Uh, well, first of all, I wanna tell you it was a very important presentation and very well, well, timely, especially having just seen the young lady speak tonight about the selection for her particular illness. And, and, and that was, I thought it was appropriate, I, I don't know that, I'm sure that you are working on it, because I, I hear that in your presentation. Um, so as I see it from the budget, and I'm looking back at the budget, then at the end of, the, you don't have the time died night on this budget. Is this for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year right here?
The current, yeah, the current.
So with the increase, with the increase in revenue, you're expecting a million dollars in revenue from the government, i- is that what I'm, that's amazing.
Yeah.
So that instead of having a negative balance, we're gonna have a, a positive balance, and I think that, that very important to the community. I remember, and it's before your guys' time, I was in the district, and I can remember year after year, the lament of the board and how much money they lost every year on the lunch program, and how the general fund had to reimburse the, uh, lunch program because they were so far in the, so far down. So this is amazing to me that we now are in the other board. Um, um, it, you, I know you give those, this breakfast and lunch. Uh, what's gonna happen during Christmas vacation? Is that gonna be nothing for the kids at, at that time? I mean, if school is closed, but, uh, I know we had summer lunches and there's nothing at that time then for kids to
I think, yeah, as of, as of the thirtieth of September, the drive-through type of meals, we had to stop doing that.
Okay.
So now we're just doing meals strictly at, at one
Just the breakfast and lunch within the school day, okay.
At, at, on school days, yeah.
Okay, um, I have one question going back to the, uh, the menu between the kindergarten and the middle school.
Yeah.
Uh, I found it interesting that middle school kids are older and eat more, and you have the same amount of food on there basically for them. I thought that was kind of, uh,
And that's the federal guidelines, um,
But they're older, I found
I know, that's
I, I, I found that very questionable, that
And that's, and it, and, and that's, these are the guidelines that I have to follow.
I understand.
Um, and that's where like, I see a lot of middle schoolers coming back. I'm like, get your fruits, get your vegetables, get your milk, get extra juice, and they're actually doing that now. Um, which is kind of nice to see, like they're grabbing apple slices if they're still hungry. And I think the whole, maybe the whole point of this is to like, get the kids to get more fruits and vegetables. But a lot of times they don't wanna take it, and even if I cook up some really nice, like broccoli and put it with the mac and cheese, they're like, no, I don't want it, or they throw it in the trash, like it happens a lot. And even if we try to give them this healthy, fresh food, they really kind of just go toward the more unhealthy stuff.
Well, it's interesting because, you know, you set up the tray with, with the five food groups, which makes it look very, and it's exposing the kids to what is a good, well-balanced meal.
Mm-hmm.
Whether they choose to take it, they're getting that exposure day in and day out,
Yeah.
which I think is very, very good. So, um, when you go Which I think is very, very good. So, um, when you go to shop outside and you have to do some shopping outside, I hope that you, that get reimbursed.
I have a district credit card, and I have a nice big car.
Oh, oh, okay. Well, I just want to tell you, I really appreciated the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you for it.
Appreciate it.
Keep up the good work because I think, uh, I think the community is really impressed by what they're seeing for their kids.
And Wade?
And Dr. Breggy, do you want to say anything?
I was just going to say, I'm sorry, our, our catering, the, our catering students.
They're doing a great job.
Catering. So maybe we don't bother Heather with your little lunch and falderol there. And let the, let the, let the kids who are getting educated in this, you know, do their job, so.
That's a great point. Just one more point for the board. Um, this participation increase at the high school would not have been possible but for the block schedule. Having those kids after lunchtime have classes, uh, when, when lunch was the last period of the day and everyone just left, that's why you had no participation at the high school. The new schedule is just amazing.
And we see, we're seeing seniors there. Before, we never used to see seniors, like we're seeing, we're seeing seniors and juniors, and, and by the time they used to hit those grades, we never see them. We usually just saw freshmen and sophomores in the cafeteria.
Yeah, I just want to say, uh, thank you very much to Heather too. You're really doing the, the job of three people. You've invited me a couple of different times to, to see what you're doing with such limited staffing, and, um, you're doing everything. Um, you are jumping from one job to another, uh, and doing it very successfully with such a limited amount of staff, and we are so fortunate to have you. So thank you.
Thank you very, very much. Wonderful. Thank you. Okay, we'll move right along. Uh, I would like a motion for the consent.
Yay food! I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar minus items A1 and D.
A1 and eleven D?
Yes.
Eleven A1 and, uh, item eleven D. Okay, is there a motion? You make a motion minus those, is there a second?
A second.
Thank you very much. Okay, uh, I'll call for the question. Uh, Mr. Raymer?
Yes.
Dr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Margot?
Yes.
Mrs. Wells?
Yes.
And Mrs. Marcus is a yes. Okay, so, uh, we're looking at item eleven A1, the regular board meeting, the minutes of that, I believe?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve item A1.
I will second the motion. We have a motion to approve eleven A1, Mr. Margot, and Mrs. Marcus is the second. Who asked that that be pulled? Thank you, Mrs. Wells.
Um, I just wanted to make a correction on the meeting minutes. It looks like it's, um, for fourteen D, which was the adoption of the Construction and Facilities Department Policies and Procedures manual. It's under fourteen D, but then it's again repeated under fifteen for professional and official business. So I would recommend that we, or propose that we delete that paragraph under professional and official business.
Okay, was that a mo-, did you just make a motion? No?
Uh, I would make a friendly amendment.
Oh, okay.
Um, yeah, since I made the motion, let me just take a look here.
I made, and we had a motion to approve the item eleven A1?
Yes, the regular board meeting minutes.
Yeah, and I make a motion to approve the item eleven A1 with the correction. Is there a second?
No, I'm so, I'm sorry, correction, Mrs. Marcus. I made the motion already, so I have to amend the motion.
Oh, okay.
And then you can, you can second my amendment.
I second, I second it.
I didn't make the, I didn't, I'm just looking up, what was the item fifteen, what?
Fourteen D.
Yeah, it's here.
No, I got the fourteen D.
And then right underneath it's repeated again under professional.
She's correcting eleven A1, which was the minutes of the meeting.
Got it, got it, got it. Okay, it was just, it was just a copy and paste.
Okay.
So it's just a paste, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll accept that. Um, I'll amend my motion, um, according to Mrs. Wells', um, correction.
Yeah.
Uh, just a brief note, uh, it is also on the website that, um, underneath the, on the, on the district website, the master plan is on there as well as the policy and procedures, and the pages on, that are on that website right now, it say, uh, that it's a board adopted on ten twenty-six, so that should probably be corrected as well.
Okay, so noted, so noted. Pam, did you get that? Hello, Pam? Pam? Did you hear that?
Yes, I got it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, so call for the question for Mr. Raymer?
Yes.
This, Dr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Margot?
Yes.
Mrs. Wells?
Yes.
And Mrs. Marcus is a yes. Okay, then item number eleven D.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract for just FOIA for public records, request, tracking, and management.
And I will second the motion. Uh, Mr. Margot made the motion, Mrs. Marcus, uh, seconded. And, uh, I believe who pulled this item? Mrs. Wells?
Uh, yes, eleven D. Um, I had a couple of questions about this, and I have some concerns about, uh, this regarding the, um, around PRAs. Um, my first question is, how many PRAs do we have? Like, how many have we had in the last twelve months?
In the last twelve months?
Mm-hmm.
Pam keeps the official record, but I think we're somewhere near eighty for the last twelve months. Pam, does that sound correct to you?
Well, we, we're, how many did you say?
Eighty for the last twelve months?
No, we've, since July one, we have twenty-seven PRAs.
For the last twelve months?
This is only since the start of the school year.
Oh, I thought you said the last twelve months, I'm sorry.
Well, in this school year, we can extrapolate.
Yeah, school year, I think we're up to twenty-seven or twenty-eight.
Okay.
Um, I just, I, I have concerns about, uh, this software in terms of who has access to the software, and I would say, um, that I would recommend that we have board policy around PRAs before we, um, sign up for this type of a program as a yearly subscription. And part of my concern with that is I feel like PRAs are used as, they're weaponized against the board, and I have concerns about, um, making this easier to utilize PRAs in, in that, in that way. I, I just don't think that's the, uh, intention of the PRAs and the availability of PRAs, and so I am hesitant to, uh, create more access so that this is, uh, can encourage misuse of PRA requests. So I would prefer to table this and look at board policy around PRAs before we sign up for a subscription to increase, uh, our ability to be pulling PRAs, especially when we don't have that many in total.
So I want to just, uh, jump in here from a standpoint of, it, it, it really, the only area that this really changes is the, um, the amount of staff time and it, uh, the, the productivity, um, the, some of these PRA requests that are, are taking a, a full day of Mr. Damico's time. Uh, it just helps, uh, the, the, the collaborative process to get the information. It really doesn't make anything any easier for anybody on the PRA requesting side. It's more the staff, the staff side, because, uh, people would be surprised if we started to calculate the number of hours that our administrators are spending, um, in a very antiquated way, trying to meet the requests of the PRA request. So it's really, on the inside, it's more of, uh, what's, what's happening as far as how we're able to put the information together. So I don't know if you want to add something to that?
Yeah, we'd just say that the, 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 there's a, there's a public-facing portal to make the request, which really just sets a clock for us to know what the real timeline looks like. Um, the people are going to make the request anyway. Um, and as Dr. Breggy said, it's, this is really on the administrative side, on the backend, where we're actually having to do the, the research, and we're having to find the documents, and then how we're routing, um, various responsibilities through the organization to get that done and still meet the timeline. So, um, it is very time-consuming. It is rather antiquated. I have some tools that have made it faster, but it still takes a lot of time. And so this, this is really a, a, a time. Uh, on the administrative side, it's, it's really a time, a function of saving time and trying to still meet the, meet the request that the person is making or the, or the entity is making on the public records.
And, but who would have access to that and how do we control that?
So the, the access to the administrative portal would be, um, Pam Kraschar is the, is the sort of PRA administrator. It comes to her. She generally routes the, the, the PRA to the various parties. Um, I would have administrative access on the IT side to make sure that the accounts are appropriately permissioned and that we, um, are, including making sure that we're routing the way it needs to route. Um, uh, but there, but there's no access to the actual record or records. Um, nothing changes there. Right now, the, when the rec, when the records requests come in, for example, for emails or documents, um, the only, the only department that has access to that information is the IT department, and I have the administrative access um, to, to those, to those, um, repositories.
Nope, Mr. Margot?
So, uh, David, the, this is a small general fund expense. How much staff time and, and estimated staff cost do you think we spend on a, in a year, like, that, are we reducing a tremendous amount, that we, we justify this expense? Not that it's a big expense, but I'm saying, you know, maybe fifty.
This actually would allow, this, this will allow us to, to actually log the time in a way that we could report to the board, but I'm going to tell you just, just the part that I do, and I, I'm not even involved in all of them. Um, the last few have taken me, um, it's taken three, three workday, three of my workdays to complete.
Okay. Um, and then I, I guess my other question is, um, regarding Mrs. Wells', uh, question about board policy. We can't, board, PRA is a state or a federal act?
It's a federal, federal act.
So there's nothing we can regulate as far as that really, right?
We're still required to, uh, to, to follow through, to, to meet.
And the amount, and the amount of time and all that, that's all gauged by the act. It's not, we don't set that.
Yep.
I, I, excuse me, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Mr. Margot. The only thing I think that Ms., Ms. Wells might be speaking to, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, but we, we, we do need to sort of determine what our retention policies are going to be for various documents. We have not, we have not done that, and so that, that is an area that we need to do, but I think that's happening under the policy review that we're currently working on as a, as a cabinet.
I was going to say, I know that in the last few years, the city had done that, about their retention policy, yeah, so that, that would be something then that we could.
I would like to also point out.
I'm not aware of a policy review, so I'm not certain what you're talking about.
We, we constantly do policy reviews on all our policy, um, according to required updates and...
Like AR?
ARs and BP board policies. It, it constantly are going through reviews because they're constantly being updated through a code, and we have to continue. It's, it's almost every year you're updating, so.
I mean, I'm, I'm speaking about the, I, the board policy around how do we distribute, um, PRAs, um, who has access to them. Um, and I think as a district, we can determine that within our, within the board and within the, the district.
You mean who administrates, uh, the requests?
Mm-hmm, and how we distribute that, like amongst the board. I currently, the board receives PRAs via the board communication. I just think that we should have board policy around those things.
I'm not sure I understand the concern. I mean, the PRAs, ma- many, many times the same PRA requests um, are, are asked from different organizations, and so, um, you know, we were required to provide that information. It's all public information.
I'd just like to point out that when we get these PRAs, and this is something that is a little more, that much, sometimes the information they're seeking is privileged, and you can't reveal some of the, and you have to go through and filter out what you can do, and this particular, uh, F, just FOIA does not do anything to that. We still have to, as I understand it, we still have to go and determine whether that, according to the, through the legal side of it, whether that's something that we can put out there as a result of it. So this does not change, that doesn't help us in any way, right?
Well, it, there are tools inside the product that allow us to, um, to automatically redact, um, sensitive information that would be in the, because, because the, the way the document, the way that, just the, the spaghetti behind all this, especially on an email, right? You export the email. It comes in a particular file format. The process of converting that to a PDF and having that PDF document be searchable, um, is fairly lengthy, and it's, it's, it's not simple. And, um, and then, and then just organizing it all, and then having to go through it and, and, you know, is there anything in this document that doesn't, that, that needs to be, you know, blacked out before it goes to whomever's making the ask? So the, the, uh, the, the product allows us to, to, um, enter keywords, for example, that we know, um, we want to make sure are not included, and it will automatically redact those out, or just, you know how you see on do, on like, other documents where it's blacked out? That, you know, we're not doing it with a Sharpie pen, it's being done electronically, and it's, and so that when the document goes out, the redactions are there, but, but still someone has to review, a person has to review the, the materials to make sure that there isn't something there that, that, um, shouldn't go out. And usually we, we turn that over to legal counsel.
Yeah. Okay, uh, Mr. Raymer, do you have any thoughts on this?
Uh, none from me.
Okay, Dr. Stern?
Um, I think that this, that what Dr. Wells brings up is a, a timely, uh, is something that is, um, relevant at this moment. Um, I do think that, uh, there's, since there's a lot of rancor in our community, um, and of course, I have no interest in stifling the process of transparency when people want records. I really don't, I don't. But let's acknowledge that apps make our lives very easy and can make things much more efficient. I do, I have some concerns that there are some unscrupulous people um, who, for reasons I'm not sure, um, look for particular documents to in fact, and to use their, uh, Mrs. Wells', um, term, weaponize against us. You know, we are non-paid folks, who I enjoy my job very much here, but, um, there are some people I have seen firsthand who have been unscrupulous with, um, this type of access, and the more efficient the pipeline, I fear, uh, could make our lives a little more difficult, um, and not in a productive way that is, is in any way beneficial to the community. I, I will say that.
Okay.
But man, let me just say that the documents are public. They're coming anyway, so why would we want to trip up staff and use more staff time when staff could be used better serving, let's say, our students and their needs as opposed to, uh, PRA requests? Anything to expedite PRA requests and get them off the plate of our staff would be great.
All internal. This is.
Well, let me get a clarification. When you said...
It's a better mousetrap.
Okay, the, the client, um, let's see, the client side, I think that was a term in the nineties. When they, when the, the requester, is this, does this make it, does it grease the pipeline a little bit more for, for that unfortunate, unscrupulous person who might want to order these PRA requests? Is there any?
It doesn't change anything from the requester.
For the requester.
Right, it's not easier for them to...
Well, other than, I just want to be clear that, that rather than the, the Requester sending an email to the district to ask for this, they're, they're going to have to click a button and they're going to have to fill out a form.
Which I, I want to say, they, they're in their right to do so.
Which.
They, they're in their right to do so, and I don't want to, I'm not trying to say it isn't. I, I'm just trying to.
Sure.
Unfortunately, we have some people who have made life unfairly difficult, but I also want to make things efficient for you guys, and I know how much time you spend on these.
Uh, one more question for it, uh, Mr. Damico. Um, have you seen this piece of, uh, uh, this, uh, uh, this?
Just FOIA?
This product in work, have you seen it in use yet? Have you visually seen it and seen?
I have. I spent quite a bit of time with the company just, just looking at it, because again, I was looking at just, you know, what, what are the capabilities, what can it do, what are the limitations, how does it change our, our workflow? I, I'm happy to, to come back to the board with answers to questions if, if that's what would make you feel more comfortable. I'm happy to do whatever you want to do.
To me, it sounds like you're using a screwdriver right now to screw in a screw, and this is going to give you a little bit of like, it's like a powered screwdriver or a drill to screw in the screw. You're still going to have to screw in the screw. It just, there's a better way to do it.
That's not a bad analogy.
Well, call on the contractor, there you go.
Okay, are we all ready for the question?
Well, I would just like to add one last comment. I'm, my concern is more about who has access to that. So if someone else in the district that is, you know, and someone that is not out for good, so to speak, that has now an ability to, um, do searches to try and create problems where there are no problems, but it gives them the ability to do that, um, that's where my concern is. Are we providing?
I think this actually provides a...
An app that, a software that now made it easier for people to do harm.
A better layer of security at... A better layer of security at, at every level on the internal side because we're not, we're, 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 the repository is, is maintained in a, in a permissions-based environment. We're not putting things on flash drives and moving information from one person to another.
Permission for that?
We, we would determine who, who the permissions are. So I'd work with Dr. Breggy and with, you know, um, leadership to, to, uh, you know, to make sure that that's all set up appropriately. I'm not gonna make the decision about who has the permissions if, if that's what you're asking.
Okay.
And, and I think it, it really wouldn't be any different from if, if we were doing this manually because if this was a, um, you know, uh, we recently hit a PRA request in student services and so, um, you know, it, it didn't really, it didn't really go to me, although I was aware of the request, but, um, it was, you know, through you and then through Laura Chisholm because it's in student services and so it wouldn't change. So the permissions for that particular PRA request would be, you know, you and Laura Chisholm and then, and then also our legal would then also look at it.
And Pam's always involved because she's the.
Kind of the, the gatekeeper of it.
Right. So, um, and, and the only reason I'm involved at all is because a lot of the information is contained in, um, in, uh, repositories that IT is responsible for.
Okay. Any other comments? Hearing none, we'll call for the question. Mr. Raymer?
Yes.
Dr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Margot?
Yes.
Mrs. Stern, Doug, Mrs. Wells?
No.
Uh, Mrs. Marcus is a yes. Okay. So three votes to one, it passes with, uh, Mrs. Wells, no vote.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, um, okay, uh, any, no, okay, so Dr. Breggy, we're ready for the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Got lots of tabs open, I know. Okay, and thank you for this opportunity. Just a short report for you this evening. Uh, just quick, uh, celebration for Halloween, um, at our school campuses. I knew that one of our biggest concerns was just the, the number of, uh, visitors on campus and, uh, a shout out to our administration at the district office and, uh, also at each of our school sites. Uh, where we had, uh, at the elementary schools, we had, uh, parents that were there on the perimeter of the campus. Uh, uh, in some cases, parents were about sixty feet away from our students and, um, they were still able to see their children in costumes. Um, and yet it was done in a very controlled way, uh, with all of our COVID nineteen protocols being followed. So, um, I wanna also thank our parents who are used to having a little bit of a closer view, um, being part of Halloween, um, that this was a, a really good, um, compromise so that we could keep some of the traditions and celebrations going for Halloween. Um, for Laco, there is an all-in, um, promotion, uh, and again, this is, as you are very well aware that, um, the county is offering, um, vaccines for our students between the ages of five and eleven. Um, and so again, this is just another layer of protection, uh, for our families. Uh, we do have, uh, a, a nice partnership with Mickey Fine and we have been working with them for quite some time. I was able to pop over there, get my booster, um, and they've been really good to us. They're, they're just great partners and, um, there is no worry of a shortage of the vaccine supplies. So, um, any family that is making that decision, um, have no problem bringing their students over and getting the vaccine. The weekly testing, as we move into, uh, week four, it's just going really well and I just wanna give you just a couple of examples where, uh, this is, this is really working. Um, there, there isn't another school district that I'm aware of anywhere, and I have friends across the country, where we have a, a, a full program, five days a week for our rapid antigen testing and then also for our PCR testing. And just a couple of examples to show you, uh, how well this is working is that, uh, we were just talking about some of the parents in, in Halloween. Um, we were able to, through the, uh, rapid antigen testing with the requirement for our visitors to get a quick, um, uh, rapid antigen test. Um, that we actually had, uh, a parent that was going in ready to, um, to volunteer in a classroom and they tested positive. And so it's working. You know, here's another example. Well, I know that a lot of people think that we're, um, you know, putting out too much. There's, there's, there's too many things that we're doing, um, with the number of cases that we have. But again, it just takes one or two cases to start to spread, so that's just an indication of that working. As well as the weekly testing, with the PCR testing, which is a really, uh, more of a comprehensive test for, um, those people that may be, um, non-symptomatic, uh, but yet still be COVID nineteen positive. And so we did have a case just recently where through the PCR testing, that a student did turn up to be, uh, positive um, without any symptoms. And then we kept in touch with the student and it wasn't until the next day, later in the day, did they report getting any symptoms. And again, you know, the positive thing here is that, that we were able to catch a case uh, where that student could have been in school for two full days, um, uh, being positive and not really knowing it. And so just another example of, of how this test is working and how we're able to keep our numbers down. Uh, we're in a good spot. You know, we have two active cases, uh, student cases in our entire district and that is just a tribute to our community. Uh, we're driven by what happens in our community and again, I can't thank our parents and our families enough and our teachers, um, and all our school, school staff for following all the protocols because, uh, this is an indication those protocols are working with two active cases in our school district. So some other things that are ongoing, we, um, and this is kind of an every year type of issue when we are looking at trying to improve certain areas, uh, with parking and traffic. Uh, we are, uh, working very closely with the city on, on certain traffic areas. There's some parking issues that are coming up that we wanna work with our city, uh, to ensure that we're providing the safest, um, but the best route for our students. Um, I can tell you that, this is a, a picture of us working with the police department and some city officials at the high school uh, yesterday. And, you know, it's amazing because class starts at eight thirty at the high school. And so, you know, if, if there's anything at all to improve here is to just come a little earlier. Um, that, I know sounds very trite, but when you're standing there and you're observing that at eight ten, eight twelve, eight fifteen, even eight eighteen, there's not one student being dropped off. But then eight twenty is when all the cars come. And so, and people get upset and there's lots of beeping and, um, you know, we don't wanna create an unsafe situation, but it's very much like, um, Beverly Vista Middle School. If you just come ten minutes early, our schools are open. We are welcoming students early to pr- please utilize at that time. It'll be a much better experience for you if you are dropping your children off, I assure you. Um, a shout out to one of our students at the high school, Danielle Hollander. Uh, she won the Ocean League title, running the three-mile course in sixteen minutes, twenty-eight seconds. And, uh, this is the fastest three-mile time of the week. Um, and Danielle was also nominated as the California Girls Cross Country Runner of the Week poll. Um, you can actually vote for her and you can see the, um, place where you can vote for her there. Um, she is a, a star on our girls' cross-country team, so just wanna give a shout out to her and it's a great shot of her in action. So we're in an interesting place with our school district and so as my reports continue throughout, uh, the rest of the year, um, you know, you've, you've heard some of these words before, um, about repositioning where we are in our school district, reimagining, refocused, redesigned the road forward. Um, and I'm going to be able to provide you with some, um, academic reports as we move forward. Um, as our job begins to shift from being, um, health officials back into the academic arena, um, you're gonna start seeing some more instructional and student achievement reports. Um, and I'm very excited about moving in that direction. Uh, one thing I wanna talk about that is a big topic in the state of California is the Universal Transitional Kindergarten Program. And this is going to be expanding. Uh, currently, right now, um, our TK, our Transitional Kindergarten Program, it's a two-year program, uh, for those students that turn five. So this is that early, uh, that early five-year-old, uh, period of time between August first and December thirty-first. That's a very small window and we're able to, uh, provide this experience. But under Governor Newsom's plan, what this does is it, it extends that so that we're able to include a program for all four-year-olds. Okay, and that, there's also going to be an element to our preschool, uh, program at all with the city. Um, and so this is a very exciting time for us as we begin to, uh, provide, uh, more of an opportunity to our youngest learners. Um, and so we're excited to be able to do that. Uh, there is a lot that has to take place in the next several years. So as this is a phase-in process that needs to be completed by two thousand twenty-five, uh, we are still going to, uh, be looking at the budget that's needed, the facility assessments. There's some money out there that we wanna be sure that, uh, we're able to get when it comes to, uh, the type of facilities that are needed for, uh, early childhood. Uh, there's also, um, uh, there's, there's a different, uh, uh, edu- like different, uh, certification for our teachers, so it's more of an early childhood focus. So, uh, there is going to be some, um, some changes in, uh, uh, our personnel and what is required from our personnel. Um, and so, uh, as well as facility assessments and also, uh, just to get an idea of what those enrollment projections will be. Um, and then this will just be a, a big change in our educational philosophy because we're really going to be emphasizing more of an early childhood approach to teaching and learning than we have in the past. So we're super excited about the challenge. Uh, it's going to be, uh, a very big opportunity for our community. And so as I mentioned, some of the reports will be changing. Um, if you think about what we've been through, just in the last five years that I've been here, there, there's truly been this evolution of teaching and learning changes. Um, going through a district reconfiguration, going into then a pandemic and now hopefully, what looks like coming out of a pandemic, uh, has really changed teaching and learning in our school district and provides, uh, a great opportunity for what the future brings. And so I look forward to, uh, in the next several presentations, uh, giving you an idea of what that future is going to look like for us. Uh, Veterans Day, so November eleventh is a time for us to remember and honor those that have served our country and we, uh, sincerely thank them for their sacrifice and their courage. Just a picture of my dad, um, who I lost three years ago. Um, but, uh, shout out to you dad and to all the veterans out there. Thank you so much for your service. And that is my report.
Thank you, thank you. Um, uh, any comments, questions, discussion? Mr. Adab, Dr. Stern?
So today I did receive a, a rapid COVID test, um, and I, I, I'm grateful again that, that such services are provided. Um, I found it to be easy, straightforward, um, you know, not a problem. And actually, they didn't go that far up, so I was, I know they did what they're supposed to do, but, but it was, you know, it was fine. On a larger note, I also wanna say that, um, addressing the universal, um, transitional kindergarten preschool, you know, it's amazing. We've all known, and in, in my studies in psychology, we've all known that the critical period of learning and language acquisition and so many things are those first three years and also first five years. And so it's amazing to me that it has taken, uh, this long for it to be really recognized that the need for some structured, educational, instructional experiences is something that really should, should happen for these brains that are, are growing. So I'm, I'm happy to hear that, um, progress and excited about the prospect of it.
Thank you. I, I do know with, uh, it'll be, and it'll be interesting to see just through some of the declining enrollment, um, you know, our, our youngest, uh, population of learners, many times, uh, families, um, are, place them into a private a school environment and then they, they get to know other families and they get to know their peers and they, they stay in that environment. And so for us to have this opportunity to focus on early childhood, um, like we have not before is just such a great, uh, opportunity for us.
Mr. Margot?
Thank you, Dr. Breggy. Yeah, I look forward to the ripple effect potentially of this program could have on raising our proficiency in elementary school and beyond. Um, it would be interesting to see over a five-year period how it affects the, the results of, of just our, just our, our kids' basics. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Wells?
I, I agree. I'm so excited to hear about this and the early childhood, um, you know, possibilities for this district. I think that it really provides an opportunity for us to address enrollment. Um, and, uh, it just is very, very exciting, so I'm happy to see that. And I really look forward to, um, developing that with you.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Raymer? I'm not, just your questions. I haven't spoken yet, so you're just commenting on the report?
Yes. Thank you. Uh, thank you for your report, Dr. Breggy. Um, like Dr. Stern, actually, I was tested at the district office this morning and so it went very well, extremely smooth. And I've been tested every Wednesday the past three weeks and tomorrow, which has also gone very smooth, so I'm appreciative of that. Uh, just a couple of comments. On slide four, there was the flyer that, of our partnership with Mickey Fine that still read that vaccines were only eligible for, uh, people twelve and up. So if that flyer would be able to be amended to, to, uh, what am I trying to say? To, to show that, that five and up are now eligible?
Yep, we will do that.
Um, in regards to the traffic, I know that I've noticed that and I've had a lot of classmates of mine bring it up. Uh, do we know, do we have any idea why traffic seems to be increased this year more so than it has been in past years? Cause I mean, I've just noticed it myself. I feel like there's definitely a, a, a larger traffic presence than there has been in the past.
You know, uh, when we were meeting with the city yesterday, um, they, they, they kind of agreed with, with us that we di- we didn't see necessarily, um, uh, an- any increase. Um, you know, we, we think that, uh, you know, the, the change in time and the change in schedule, there's still some flexibility for, uh, people if they don't have that first block. So, um, uh, you know, we, we haven't necessarily seen, uh, there, there's many people that have made the observation that, um, in wa- in many ways it's better. Um, some people have said that they feel like it's a little bit tighter. Um, but, uh, there, there hasn't been anything from the city because they've been looking to. Um, they were pretty impressed with the way that it went. Um, again, they agreed as well that, um, you know, when there's, when you're twelve minutes before the bell rings uh, and there's no one dropping anybody off, that, uh, there's no reason to wait until the last minute. So, um, I'm not really sure why that, that's happening. I think it happens every year. I think everyone's a little bit rushed, but, um, but we continue to look at it every day.
Thank you.
Okay, couple of comments that I have. Um, well, first of all, I'm so thrilled to hear about the early childhood program that we're going to undertake and I think that's gonna be welcomed from the city also. I think that they're probably thinking that it belongs in the schools and that's where it should be. And the fact that, that we start kids younger, maybe we capture them instead of them going to the, the, the other schools where they're private and they stay there. Um, I was just interested in the information about the, um, uh, start of the school day and the traffic. Uh, last year, a lot of the kids started at, uh, period zero. And so now, there's, well, all the kids come pretty much at the same timing unless they have a different block. And I wondered how much that has had. And Noah's shaking his, no, but I.
They don't, they don't really come at the same time. Since period one became period zero, there's a lot of kids on Monday, Thursday that come at ten.
Well, no, I wasn't talking about that. I'm talking about from last year where kids had a mod zero and they would come.
Yeah, yeah, last year, but I'm saying this year is different.
No, I'm not talking about this year. I just, yeah. Okay, so I thought that that might have had some effect on it.
No, just, I've, I've, I've driven that sea of cars, so.
And, and I would like to make a comment. You recognized, uh, the Hollander girl who beat Brandon, uh, in the cross-country. But I do believe her brother also finished first and I think it, I would love to have seen, even though he's not the col- the girl or the athlete or whether, I mean, we mentioned her name and I thought it would be nice if we mentioned that her brother also took first place in cross-country. But that, I, I think he did. I don't, I'm.
I, I'm, it, was it first place as well?
Yeah, they were both, they were both, uh, individually champions.
Okay, I wasn't aware of that, so.
So I just wanna give a little shout out to the brother.
Yeah.
And, uh, say, uh, also I wanna mention one thing. I went to a, um, this is a strange story. I went to a Halloween, um, house that was called Come See This Amazing House. I walked in and, uh, it was right around the corner and there was a young. And there was a young man sitting there who was the father of five kids that went to Hawthorne that I had as students. So I said to him, and I remember them well. And I said, by the way, how's, and the older daughter was an athlete here at the high school. Her name was Sydney, and Sydney Siegel. And I said, how's Sydney? Well, Sydney's on Survivors right now. So the other night, I happened to turn it on. Just, and there she was, big as life, Sydney Siegel. And I was very impressed. She was an honors student and everything else at the high school. She was a really amazing student.
She's my favorite show and she's doing awesome.
What did he say? What did he say?
Okay, that's too much information.
So keep cheering for Sydney Siegel. I don't know what happened to her, but. She's still in it?
Surviving.
Oh, good, okay. So now, Mr. Raymer, it's your turn. Are we ready for our student board report?
Fantastic. It's a, a bit of a shorter one tonight. Let me get everything set up. All righty. So time for the student board member report for November 9th. It's amazing that this is my ninth report to the board.
On the ninth?
Yeah, ninth on the ninth. So starting with the high school as we do. Moving on to the past, it's relatively short this week, like I was saying. But, and this is something I've talked to you about in the past. We're going to kick it off with Halloween and the featured costume that I selected this week because it's the one that I most readily have pictures of is, was me and my friends that I talked to you about where we dressed up as each other. So we're going to start with the before picture. And then you'll see the after where we have swapped. So this was on Thursday. This is out in the, the STC patio. And then here was Friday. So there, my, my friend Maxi in the middle is actually wearing my, my name tag that I have on right now. And he got a kick out of that. So we had a lot of fun. I saw a lot of other students dressing up. So it was definitely great to see student participation. And I believe that ASB also advertised that, that students should be dressing up for Halloween. And I know that we had great participation within our class as well. So over the weekend, our Model United Nations team attended Bruin-Mun, which is UCLA's Model United Nations Conference for high school students. They also put on one for college students in the future. But this is an extremely well-run and well-attended event with high schools from all across both the county and even across states and sometimes internationally. I don't think there was as high of international performance, not performance, attendance this year. But in the past, I have seen it. I met a lot of students from surrounding high schools. A couple in the committee I was in were from Paly. We had some Miracosta, some Harvard-Westlake. So definitely some, some, some schools that we, we see a lot of. It was a lot of fun to do. And we're hoping to attend another conference in December, which is the conference that Miracosta puts on. In other news, ASB is now planning lots of events. I believe we have a spirit week set for next week or the next two weeks where we are hoping to, to generally increase school spirit. We're trying one thing that has been a social media craze recently, which our students have really wanted us to do, which is Anything But a Backpack Day. And what that encompasses is students carry their books or whatever else in something that isn't a backpack. So you've seen, I've had some, some friends of mine say that they're going to bring a trash can that they're going to put it in. Others have set a stock pot. So I'm, I'm interested to see some of the innovative things that people decide to, to use instead of a backpack. We're also-
I realize why they invented the backpack.
Oh, yeah. And then we are also planning Color Wars, which has been a favorite event in the past. It'll take place an evening sometime after school. And I don't have the exact date off the top of my head currently, but it is set for a date and it will be held outside, I believe. So that, like we did for the pep rally, so one, we can have higher attendance and attendance is just generally easier. And it'll be cooler because I know that the, when I attended my freshman year, it got rather warm in the swim gym having people participate in events down on the, the floor. And finally, something else that we are planning is our Winter Formal, which is a dance that we do every year. Currently, this dance is, is generally off-campus and in a separate, we, we rent out a venue. And it's also generally fully catered. So that's what we're doing this year. I believe the current location that we're planning on is the City Market Social House where we had prom last year because that is one of the few venues, one that we have an excellent relationship because of last year and that can accommodate the amount of students that we need in a space. It's also semi-outdoors because they have essentially garage doors that line sides of the venue so that we get airflow throughout. So it's an excellent spot that we've worked well with in the past and we, we should have a, a great time within the future. Onto BBMS. So of course, Halloween, I'll have one of these for each of the school sites. But like I mentioned last time, they did a Halloween costume contest. And here are the four winners in each of the categories. So top left, you have the funniest, or of the, the left grid picture, the top left, you have the funniest. The, the bottom right of that, you have the most original. And the, the same orientation on the, the image on the right where the best group costume is on the top left and the scariest is on the bottom right. Halloween maze was put on by ASB, which I believe this is a picture of the ASB class dressed up for Halloween with their advisor and English teacher, Mr. Tinter, who we've seen in the past. But they had excellent class participation and put on a great Halloween maze at BV where an In-N-Out truck came that I had promoted at the last board meeting. I heard there was great participation. We even had some students at the high school who were working in the maze as scarrers. So it, it was a great event for, for full district cooperation. In other news, at BV, they will be hosting a College Spirit Week from November 15th to the 19th. And I think that that's fantastic. It's always great to start thinking about college early. But I do warn the middle school students not to have their heart set on one place. I mean, the, most of the, the colleges that I decided to apply to this year, I hadn't even really thought of in the past. So it's always great to keep an open mind. But if your parent is really pushing their university, then appease them and wear a jacket for them during the spirit week. There are, there, bleh. There, they are also doing a November event on November 19th as well. So moving on to Hawthorne, past. Socktober, the, at Hawthorne, they did a sock collection drive as that is the most requested item by shelters. So they, they collected lots of socks, which is for a very good cause. Edible Garden, which is different than the herb garden that we heard about in the past. This is any student or any class is able to go to this garden where they plant lots of fruits and vegetables that are edible, that the, the students are able to cultivate and grow themselves. The, the teacher that's taken the lead on this is, is Ms. Erickson. And then Mr. Gomez, a groundskeeper, has been helping out as well. So that's a fantastic project to see. I always remember at El Rodeo, going down to the garden was always one of my favorite activities. So it's great that students are continuing to have opportunities like that. Pajamarama, this is an event that I believe they hold monthly. And this was the first that they held indoors in the library at Hawthorne. So it's great to see that progress moving forward. And we have the reader this week, or this past Pajamarama was an aide over at Hawthorne, Sedjun Bibz. So thank you for volunteering your time to read it to the students because as you can see, there's pretty good attendance and that's always a fun event. Halloween, of course, here are some pictures from Hawthorne. And then Student Council is getting up and running at Hawthorne. It's always great to start early. On the left there is Chloe Cave, the president of the Student Council. And on the right is Caitlin Yeshova, the vice president. So I hope to, to work with them in some, some capacity in the future. It's great to get Student Councils started early so that they, they can continue on and learn the, the important leadership skills that will be necessary. Horace Mann. Halloween, again, just some great pictures. There was excellent participation from students, staff, and parents that, that attended in some capacity. So that's fantastic to see. Elementary Science Lab. So here are some students working on fossils. This is the, they, they were doing a fossil unit where they learned both patience in excavating fossils as well as close, asking good questions about what each fossil was. So interactive experiences are always some of the, in my opinion, the best way to learn or at least how I find I learn the best. And so I love seeing opportunities like that at each grade level. And of course, Veterans Day, the students at Horace Mann have been painting flags or actually, I believe, ripping paper and then pasting together flags and then writing notes to veterans on them to, of course, honor their service to our country. There you can see on the left, a class of students with all of their American flags that they've made with each of their individualized notes. At Horace Mann, they're also partnering with, or working with Operation Gratitude to collect candy after Halloween to send to troops overseas. So in conjunction with Veterans Day, they're helping active duty service members. I know that at the high school, PTSA also did a, a drive for candy, also being donated to Operation Gratitude. Thank you. Any comments or questions?
Dr. Stern?
Thank you very much. No comments at this point.
Mr. Margul?
Thank you, Eli. I, I also want to mention the high school. PTSA is having a shopping weekend at Century City this weekend. There are several stores that are either giving discounts and/or donations back to. But you could check your inbox on your email for flyers for that.
Thank you. Mrs. Wells?
I just want to, actually, as I watch your presentations every week, one of the things that I thought I would point out that I always appreciate is that when you're showing pictures of the high school, is seeing B1 and B2 in the background. The school just looks so fantastic. And when you showed the picture of you and your, your friends and your costumes, I was looking at the buildings in the background and I just think it just looks really wonderful. So I just thought I'd point that out.
Yeah, that, that courtyard where we took the, the photo is at B1, which is right around where, where Mr. Chang and Ms. Kessel's room are, as well as the media center. And that's where we actually congregate to eat lunch and a lot of students do as well. It's a great spot that offers both a lot of shade but also a lot of natural light. It just, it looks fantastic. I remember walking in the first day and going, yeah, this, this'll, this'll be a great spot. And then so it has.
You have carried on a wonderful tradition. Thank you.
Once again, Mr. Raymer, a wonderful presentation. Thank you. I just want to remind, one of the things coming up tomorrow night at Beverly Vista is they are all going to see Hamilton. And that should be a very exciting thing. I know I'm taking my grandchildren tomorrow night. I don't know how much they're going to like it. But you're going to take? I'll see you there.
See you there.
Okay. Thank you very much again. I now have a, a public hearing on a proposed education effectiveness block grant expenditure. The plan is now open at 6:55 pursuant to the California Education Code, Section 41480. The governing board of the Beverly Hills Unified School District is required to hold a public hearing to adopt the proposed educator effectiveness block grant expenditure plan. This plan was, the public was invited to email their questions to Mr. Dustin Seaman, who was going to present the plan. Mr. Seaman, have you received any comments or any questions at this time?
I have not.
Okay, so we are ready to hear about the educator effectiveness block grant.
Yeah, thank you, Board of Education. I just wanted to take an opportunity for us to be able to kind of talk you through the actual grant itself. Make sure we are able to clarify any questions for the community. And then we'll bring this back for an actual final vote and approval at the next Board of Education meeting. Basically, the educators effectiveness grant, this is the second round of money that we've actually been able to receive. This grant was approved in the BHUSD, I believe, in 2016 and 2017 school year. Unfortunately, that, at that time, it was only a three-year grant. And so when I was stepping into this position, it was in the last year of the grant, which was the 1718 school year. The, the state of California did not offer this money for the last two years. And so finally, it is our first opportunity to reapply back for this five-year grant. They've extended it from three years to five years. And so these are loose plans. These are plans that we will be able to bring back to the Board of Education as a touch basis. So every spring, right along with their strategic plan, we'll be able to, I, show you and identify exactly where we're utilizing the professional development money that will align with our strategic plan. And so just looking at the current form that we are utilizing this year, which is different than if you were on the Board of Education in 2016, you'll see that there's different categories in which we are able to utilize the funds to be able to support growth across our district. Everything from safety and security, where you'll see that we start to earmark some money to support our playground aides, to office staff around intervention programs of helping us identify students through our Ares platform, all the way to what we're doing with Mr., Dr. Mike McDowell and our leadership team around clarity and teacher efficacy. That's our PD that we're doing with our leadership team now that we hope to translate into, eh, work with our teachers just around like claim evidence and reasoning. And so you'll see throughout each of those categories, we earmarked a certain amount of dollars over the five years' time. It is fluid. So if we do not spend money in a certain category that year, we always have the opportunity to be able to move it across. The end goal, and this is the goals that I like to have, is to spend it before the five years. And so we do, we do have to spend it within the five years or we do lose it. It will not, this is not one of those that will roll over, if that makes sense. And so I, I just want to answer any questions before the approval process or any preemptives that you might have before. And then obviously, we'll also have an opportunity at the next board meeting to answer any questions.
Yeah, I, I had asked and just wanted to confirm about the ability, the flexibility in the program as we move out of the pandemic and we may see different needs arise for completely different fundings that weren't anticipated, that we will be allowed to address those potentially with these, with these funds.
Absolutely. And again, it, our, our current strategic plan too will actually eclipse during this effective educators effectiveness grant. So in that new rewrite for the new strategic plan in a year probably, we'll also want to indicate maybe some changes into this plan that's reflective of that new strategic plan as well.
Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Wells?
I have no questions. Thank you.
Mr. Raymer?
None from me. Thank you.
Mrs., Dr. Stern?
No, thank you.
I would just like to point out that in this plan, and we've been talking about things that in, in the future, and we just started to talk about an early childhood program. And there's room in this to develop that program, which I'm very, very, I, I don't, I can see that it's going to be amazing if we can get that, you know, using that money to plan the program. And the other thing is, is that with the passing of the Ethnic Studies curriculum, we have room in there we have room in there for developing our own curriculum within our district and how it best suits our community and our school system. So I really am very, very looking forward to those two things that I think are, it's great that we got some money to do that.
Yep. In both of those items, just from a clarification standpoint, 2025 would be implementation of both ethnic studies and an option for early childhood education.
That's what comes in very handy, right?
And so you'll see how we've strategically earmarked those monies two years out for us to do initial planning and then implementation and be ready for the 2025.
And also the one other thing was the special teacher that, or the, I'm trying to think of the program with Stanford. I think that's in there also, so.
Yep. National Board Certification.
Right. So I think that's unbelievable. So, Mr. Seaman, have you received any questions or comments?
Nope.
Okay, the Board of Education has heard your comments and we thank you very much for your input. The public hearing is now closed at 7:01 PM.
Perfect. Go Sydney, season 41 Survivor.
Okay, all right. Moving on to business and finance.
President Marcus, I'll make a motion to reject claim number 599138.
Thank you. Do I have a second? I'll second it. Mr. Margot moved the motion. I seconded it in the rejection of the claim number 59. Any questions? Comments? Okay, Mr. Raymer?
Yes.
Dr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Margot?
Yes.
And Mrs. Wells?
Yes.
And Mrs. Marcus says a yes, so it passes 4-0 with a provisional vote of 5-0. Thank you. Okay, item number 14B, agreement for bond management. I need a.
I'll make a motion for approval of the agreement for bond management services between Beverly Hills Unified School District and Team Concept Development Services.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Moved by Mr. Margot, seconded by Mrs. Wells. And discussion and comment. Anybody? Dr. Stern?
No.
Mr. Margot?
No, I had asked several questions about this last time. I had received responses. There's important changes that benefit probably both parties in this contract in the end. I did look into the hourly rate increase and the fee. Both are, the hourly rate increase is lower than the rest of our district has received in the last three years. The fee is lower than the going rate for companies doing this work. Wade, I don't have the contract in front of me, I only have my notes. So is it, was it 2.5? If you write 2.5 and the industry standard, and this is 3% to 5%. Wade is nodding his head yes, because he's not on camera. And then of course, the indemnification language, which was brought up to current district standards for these contracts, which had not been under previous district standards. So I appreciate the work done on this contract. It's a sizable investment, but it's a greater return, I believe, because the program has turned around immensely from the beginnings, from 2008 to 2017, when the only thing that was actually completed was the Horace Mann auditorium in that almost 10 years. And now we have Horace Mann and B1, B2, and more buildings on the way. So thank you for staff and everybody that put this contract together.
Mrs. Wells?
Well, I have a few comments about this. In the last meeting, I had made a motion to pull this from the agenda. And so I don't feel that it's the time to have this on the agenda again to be approved. Like I had stated previously, there's no urgency for this contract to be approved at this time, since we have an existing five-year contract that still has nine months on it. And given that this is an estimated contract that can be worth, you know, an estimated amount of $50 million, I feel like this contract deserves and requires more due diligence and thoughtful consideration before entering into this contract. I feel as a board, we should be reviewing the existing contract that we've had and what that performance has looked like for us and what improvements we may want to be making, as well as what we would want to see in the next five-year contract going forward. In light of the fact that we had a recent budget presentation and master plan presentation, in light of that, I think even more so, we need to be clear on where we are today and where we want to go with this program for the next five years. I think in addition to that, given Dr. Breggy's presentation today about talking about transitional kindergarten and early childhood, there's other things for us as well to be considering. And I just think that we're rushing into signing a contract right now that's a five-year contract. So we currently don't have a staff on assistant superintendent for facilities and construction. My recommendation would be that we utilize our committees, our board committees, and have our construction and facilities board committee look at this and provide us recommendations and review. I would also suggest that we send it to the finance committee, because we're looking at financing and how are we going to finance this program? And I really feel strongly that entering into a five-year contract before we've answered some of these questions and reviewed where we've been is, you know, it's not really giving this contract the time and consideration that it deserves for us as the district and for our community. I think that the work that we've had done, like I mentioned earlier, I think it's been fantastic. I think that Pro West is doing an incredible job. But this is about looking at where we are and really defining, taking a pause and defining where we are as a district and what are, aligning this with our goals and our vision for our future. And it's worth taking this opportunity at this time. It's the end of a five-year contract. We're about to start a new five-year contract. We have a different picture for budget and a schedule for our master plan. And I think it's a good time for us to really consider all of these things before we rush into a contract.
Mr. Raymer?
I'd like to agree with Mrs. Wells about the utilization of board subcommittees in that both the facilities and construction committee, as well as the finance committee within their guidelines on the district website, say that they review and make recommendations to the Board of Education regarding whichever subject area is their prescribed area. And I don't think that delegating work to review and recommend would undermine any of the work that the board members do and would in any way detract from that. But I think that getting an extra set of eyes on a document this long and something that we will be entering into four or five years is rather important and could be and should be undertaken before the board does approve it.
Thank you. I also have a few thoughts on the contract, having gone through it. I don't see any, I mean, I feel that right now we're at a point where we should be asking our committees, especially the facilities and construction and the finance committee to look at this contract. Five years is a long way down the line, and I don't see us right now with what's going on with the presentation we had a few weeks ago, that we need to sign a contract for the next five years, since we don't know where we're really going to be. It doesn't mean that, I don't think that, it's not doing a good job, the contractor, the bond manager, but I'm very concerned about the fact that we just don't know where we're going to be. And from the report that we got, I cannot in all good conscience vote for a five-year contract. That's just my personal take on it. I echo the words of, as far as Mr. Margot is concerned and so on, but I really feel I am not doing our stakeholders good justice by putting this, passing this tonight without the input from the committees that we have out there that are supposed to help us. And.
So can I rebuttal?
Yes, you can.
Thank you. Couple of things to remember. First of all, last meeting, we voted on a $6 million Pro West contract in the next phase. Nobody on this board asked the committees to review that. That's both financial and construction related. I find it actually hypocritical to say you're going to want certain things reviewed, but not everything reviewed. We don't have contracts reviewed by the finance committee. Everything we vote on is attached to a dollar amount. That means you would ask the finance committee to review everything. That's not the purview of the finance committee. That being said, also, as far as it being about eight and a half months until the contract expires, and for those that feel that it's too far out to renew this contract at this point, in July of this year, we renewed Dr. Breggy's contract for three years, 11-plus months ahead of his contract termination date. So that seems to not be a practice too, which would also make that argument a tad hypocritical as well. The contract is a public document. Everybody who serves on the finance and the facility committee had access to this contract for the last two and a half weeks. They could have read it and opined to any of us at that point if they were interested. And I would certainly hope that they would have if that were the case. The other thing that is concerning is the continuity of services. What I'm not hearing from anybody up here is an actual issue with the terms of the contract. It only seems to be an issue with the length of the contract. And as we have been explained several times, the contract can be terminated by either party at any point without any penalty. So it is not a five-year commitment at all. In fact, if our building program ends in three years and all of our projects are finished, we can terminate the contract with no penalty to us at all. So there's, the contract, what the contract does do, what people need to remember is it provides continuity for the program. It provides continuity for the bond manager to continue the work that he's already started, B3, B4, and El Rodeo. If I, we are not going to stop those projects. And then, and then the board will decide about the rest of the bond program following that. That sits in the board's purview still. That's not given over to the bond manager. So that still is a decision that we will make about the rest of the program. It seems to me that if we interrupt the continuity of service, we're going to delay the building program. And in that, we'll have a ripple effect of our students that I, for one, do not want to be responsible for. Because if there's any delays further outside of COVID and supply and logistic issues than we do, you know, we can't control what's outside of our purview, but we can control what's inside. Continuity of service with the contractors and the architects and the engineers is very important to me, to finish up the program, at least the buildings that need to get finished for these students to return back to those classrooms.
Well, to be, if you're saying to finish up the program, it's not going to take five years to finish up the program where we are right now, so that.
Exactly. Which means the contract can be ended.
Well, but there is a clause in here, and I can't find it right at this very minute, but I remember there is a clause in which if termination, there is something in here that is not in our favor, that I think he does get some, that there is something for the bond manager. And I'm not saying that, you know, there was something in here, as I recall, and I'm trying to find it, because I did make a note of it, that there was a clause in here about termination. So I do recall that.
May I make a comment?
Yes, go ahead.
I haven't talked about the actual details of this contract, because I feel like it's really important in terms of, you know, at this point, we haven't had, we haven't had a review really of the existing contract and as well how we would want that contract to look going forward. I understand that there was a revision from the time we pulled it from the agenda until today, but that's not a revision that was prompted by the board giving direction to go and renegotiate that contract. We didn't have a conversation before the contract came before us. And when I look at this contract, a few things pop out at me. And one is that I understand that the rates have changed and it's 10% increase, and you're comparing it to the other district staffing increases. But I'd rather know what's the industry standard and what those rates are. Not necessarily what our staff members are getting in the district, but what is the industry standard for other vendors out there that can provide this service? I would like to know, you know, why are we taking language out about, or putting language in that specifically states we don't need a contractor's license? What prompted that? You know, does Don have a contractor's license? Why do we need to have that language in there? In terms of indemnity, I would like to know what is the industry standard? Not what other contracts that we do as a district, but what is the industry standard for this type of service and the indemnity that is written into this contract? And why are we changing it at this time versus the previous contract? You know, I've seen before that we have DSA inspectors. I don't see DSA inspectors on this contract. There's a variety of things that I have as questions, but you know, we, on our construction and facilities committee, we have, by my count, four lawyers, attorneys, and another person who's worked in public works their entire life. And that's a great resource for us. I'd rather have this go to them and look at our program and provide us with their review and recommendations before. I am not an attorney. I've not had a conversation with our attorney to understand why these things have been added into the contract. And I would prefer, because we don't have a assistant superintendent that this would go through that's on our staff, and because this goes to the board directly, I think we should use that resource. I understand that perhaps in the past we haven't and we didn't have that committee, but we do now. And these are, this is a great resource for us. And this is, like I said previously, this, for a five-year contract, in value, it's 30-plus million. So it's not a $6 million contract for a lease leaseback guaranteed max price. This is a, this is a much larger contract. And for the work that's going to be put in place with that, that it's going to be overseen, it's even much more than that. So I think we do need to consider this more carefully. It's not to say that we wouldn't have a continuity of work. It's not to say that it's going to go down to the last ninth month. It means that it just, there is a reason for us to take a pause and consider what it is that we're entering into. It doesn't mean that we wouldn't. It just means that we should be considering these things. And I think it's really important. We are at a place right now where we should be pausing. That's why it's a five-year contract, to relook at it for going forward. We should take the time to do that.
Mr. Roach, is, are there any questions that Mrs. Wells asked that you could answer tonight? Because you do act in that capacity where we don't have an assistant super, particularly of construction, but you do oversee these things.
Yeah, I'd feel much more comfortable if the board would just put those questions in writing and then we can do proper research.
Noah, in regard to the one question that I posed about where you said there was, there was nothing in here that would affect the termination. There's a whole section 9.3.4 that addresses that. I was able to find it. 5% of the projected project management incentive, whether or not, if less than 50% or 5%, if more than 50%, there's a, there seems to be some remuneration for that if there's a termination, so.
Yeah, my understanding is that if there's a termination, there's a transition period, and the remuneration is for the transition period.
Well, I'm just pointing out that there is a termination clause in there that.
Right.
But I'm not worried about that, because I think that we need, we need to keep going and we need to finish what we've got started. We can only go so far right now, and it doesn't seem to be five years down the line unless we were able to do something with finding another sources of income.
So, so Mrs. Marcus, my question then is, are you looking to have points of this contract renegotiated? Are there things in here that you would submit for renegotiation?
Well, I would like to have an understanding if we're not going to finish, if we can't do right now what the master plan says with what we've got, I would like somehow that to be part of the contract, so that there's no question about what is the length of the contract? What will it be for what we've got right now? That's the only thing that bothers me, Noah.
So you would like the contract to then read that once B3, B4, and El Rodeo are completed, then the contract should be renegotiated?
If at that time, we can do something else, right? In other words.
So if we have, if we, in that time, if we don't vote for and to continue any more construction for whatever reason, wherever we allocate.
Well, we're talking about not only El Rodeo, but B3, B4.
Every, well, I'm assuming we all want B3 and B4 finished, right?
Well, they're going to be done. We are know that.
Right. That's what I'm saying. So I'm saying anything that's not currently under contract with Pro West, you would like to reserve the right to tell TCDS that once you're, once you're done working with the projects we have now, we're going to take a look at your contract again.
Right.
That's a fair thing to ask for a negotiation point.
I would really, it's not to me a question of whether or not we want to finish B3 and B4. It's a question of what does the contract look like and the terms in that contract and what we're changing? And, you know, I, we're sitting here as board members, we have these resources of people that can also provide their recommendations. I'd like to know what the industry standards are. I'd like to know why we are, who suggested the 10% increase? Where did that come from? What was the justification for the 10% increase? I, you know, we haven't had these conversations. I really, really would recommend that we refer this to committee and receive, so that we can continue to move this forward. But to have them review this along the lines of what our budget and master plan schedule looks like and what other initiatives that we have out there, and have them provide us with their recommendations. I would also have the finance committee review that because of the fact that we're looking for financing and how are we going to fund these things? And I think it's important for them to be able to assess, what is, what is the value of this contract? What potential risks do we have in this contract from a financial standpoint? And it's not a question of who do we want to finish? It's a question of what does the contract look like for the next five years to finish? And I think it's important, we can take that time to do that. It's not, it's, there's not an urgency right now. There is no reason not to move that forward. And in response to why you haven't heard from necessarily a finance committee or a facilities committee, I think they also would like to hear from the board in terms of giving direction. I think they also would like to hear from the board in terms of giving direction, that we would like them to consider that and to review that. So I don't think you're going going to have any individual finance committee member or facilities and construction member uh, putting in public comments suggesting that that should happen. I think they would wait to meet as a committee and either hopefully have that direction from the board, or that they would recommend it more formally.
There have been very astute finance committee members over the years that have reached out after every agenda, um, whether we give direction or not, to say, hey, you guys need to take a look at this closer, or you guys need to do this, or we should take a look at this. So it's been more, it wasn't, they didn't necessarily, they were more proactive, they didn't wait for.
Right, well, that may be the case previously, but but there's no reason not to do it now, in my opinion. I would hope that I could have consensus with this board to refer this to the committee, so that we can move this forward. I would like to make a motion to refer this to committee to move it forward.
Um, we have a, we have to.
We have a motion on the floor right now, we have to vote on, that's.
Let's vote on this first.
Okay, are there any other comments that want to be made? Um, Mr. Raymer, do you have anything you want to say? No, okay, so I'm going to call for the question at this point.
Marcus, what I'd like to do since I made the motion is I'm going to withdraw my motion, so that you can have your issues attended to.
So we can have what?
I'm going to withdraw the motion, because it's going to be a push at the best tonight.
Okay.
Um, so I'm going to withdraw the motion now, and then make a motion to table it um, to a further date. I don't need to see the item being defeated tonight or being on a stalemate. So that way you guys can actually get your questions answered and whatever your concerns are, so let's take care of that logistical business first.
Okay, well then, uh, make a motion to.
I'm going to make a motion to table this item.
Okay, all right, uh, I'll call for the question, I need a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Dr. Stern, Mr. Margot made a motion to table this item. Dr. Stern seconded it, and hearing no discussion, I'll call for the question, uh, Mr. Raymer?
Yes.
Dr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Margot?
Yes.
Mrs. Wells?
Yes.
And Mrs. Marcus is a yes, okay?
Mrs. Marcus, I'd like to make a motion to refer this to committee, to finance committee and construction facilities.
Beg pardon?
Well, I'd like to give direction.
Okay, is there a second to the motion?
It's direction.
You just need to get consensus for direction, there's no, there's no motion, ever, any motion would have to be agendaized, we can't just do that, so.
Okay.
Do I have con- consensus with the committee to send this to committee?
Give the direction to uh, Dr. Brighi, uh, when he returns, uh, and uh, we'll make that.
Can I make the suggestion, I'm not going to support this, but I would make the suggestion that you give hard dates, because this can float in committees for months. And you should have this addressed at each committee's next meeting, and come back with their findings, whatever you want to do. I please would 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 help, implore my colleagues to at least give direction to do that.
Okay, uh, we have, we have a meeting in two weeks, Mr. Margot, and um, then we have another meeting right after that, uh, on the uh, the week before the, we have, before the organizational meeting. So I I'd like to find out when the uh, facilities and construction committee is meeting, so that they can uh, get a look at the contract. Is that what you want, is that what?
I would like to, I I don't have a problem with putting an end date on that in terms of a goal, but I think it would be more than one meeting. So I think we should look at the calendar of when those committees meet.
That's what I'm saying, yeah, I'm trying to figure out when they're going to meet.
That's why the process should be started at the next meeting?
Yes.
For both committees?
And then they can.
And conclude the following meeting.
Okay.
Or if they ask for, right.
There's plenty of time.
But I think we would ask them how much time they need, they may finish in one, they may need two, or more.
I think for purpose of our governance, we should give them up to two, so they have both, if they get it done earlier, great.
I agree.
But that's fine, so they, because they only meet once a month.
All right, I need to find out when the uh, the committees are meeting. I think I can find that out and speak to the, to the chair.
Mrs. Marcus, I've.
I had the dates.
I have it, the uh,
Agreed.
The finance committee's next meeting is December ninth, and the facility and constructions committee's next meeting is November seventeenth.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, we have pulling that from the item, uh, Dr. Brighi? While you were gone, we tabled the uh, contract, and we were making uh, we were being asked to get the finance committee and the facilities and construction committees to uh, review these, to review this and get back to us with, after, they have two meetings to get back to us at that, but is that what the uh, motion was, right?
I think we should.
Not a motion, direction.
Direction, and I would suggest that we ask if they can complete it in two meetings, and if not, then they can let us know. But that the idea is that we'd like it to be comple- completed in two meetings if possible.
Well, we'd like it there as soon as possible.
Yeah, then I, then I think hopefully whoever's coordinating, Wade, I think you coordinate those, then I think um, the direction should include the material gets to the committee members beforehand, so they can review it and be ready to discuss.
Right, and perhaps ask questions.
Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
I also, I also implore, I'm sorry, one second, I also implore my colleagues tonight, who had a slew of of uh, productive questions, to please get those answered as soon as possible.
Okay.
The the only issue I see with CAPE with asking for it in the next two meetings is that the the finance committee meets December ninth, and they don't meet again until January twentieth, while the facilities and construction committee, I believe, may meet. Uh, again, their next meeting is November seventeenth, and then the meeting after that is January nineteenth.
So there's nothing to stop those committee, those committees from setting other meetings, they could follow up sooner.
I was just going to say, I, and if you've, if you've ever worked under a contract, um, you know that, um, you know, a lot of this feels like the 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 confidence that you have in the person and the program, and so, you know, that's certainly a concern as superintendent, just of the overall uh, program and just the overall team that we have, and so I would, I would, you know, like to uh, be assured that it's moving quickly and that 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 questions are being answered, um, as they should be for the Board of Education. Because I'd like to to move quickly.
Absolutely.
And I, you know, I've said this previously, and I, it's worth saying again, this is not um, this is not questioning the work that's been done thus far, it's about what changes do we need to make to this contract going forward in this next five-year contract, and how do we review? What's worked in it uh, currently? And I, I, it's not a question of um, of trust in the work that we've seen done.
Okay, um, I think, do we call for the question on that, and we have.
There's no question, you do have three board members giving direction.
Uh, I have asked to give direction.
I'm giving direction.
Mandy, okay, Dr. Stern? Dr. Stern, Mrs. Wells and Mrs. Marcus have asked for the direction, for the two uh, two committees to be seeing the contract and come back to us ASAP with their findings.
Yes, I, may I add, I definitely think that it should be date limited, because um, I can appreciate uh, what Dr. Brighi was saying, you know, that, I mean, I just think that that's very smart, that committees, you know, can take a long time, and let's definitely have it with a structure of a date for deliberation.
Right, okay, thank you. Okay, uh, moving on, uh, fifteen A.
Um, I'm sorry, did we actually take the vote on the tabling?
Yes.
We did.
Okay.
It was four and oh with the provisional, five and oh, Mr. Margot. Okay, um, fifteen A approval, I need a motion for, I'll make a motion.
I'll make a mo- okay.
I'll make an a- motion to approve the professional services agreement with Darren Dorshoe, the logistic team, technology consulting, to provide IT and AV construction oversight services relative, related to the Horace Mann Theater Auditorium. Have a second?
I'll, I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Margot, moved by Mrs. Marcus, seconded by Mr. Margot. Any con- uh, comments, questions, discussion?
Oh, I I did have one, um, the allocated funds for this project, the entire project, and you could just say yes or no, David. Um, would, have they been accounted for in the the bond measure already?
Yes, I put them in the.
Technology plan?
In the, yes.
Okay, so not just the design, but the actual work too?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, call for the question, Mr. Raymer?
Yes.
Dr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Margot?
Yes.
Mrs. Wells?
Yes.
Mrs. Marcus is a yes, it passes four and oh with the provisional, five and oh vote. Okay, fifteen B, I need a motion.
I will make a motion for the approval of amendment number nine to the lease leaseback agreement for Beverly Hills High School modernization of buildings B1 and B2.
I will second the motion, Mr. Margot made the motion, seconded by Mrs. Marcus. Okay, any discussion?
Michael, is Pam, did?
I don't see Pam on there.
Did Pam Johnson wanted to address this, or?
Is Pam here? Yeah. Oh, hi Pam.
Hello.
Can you give a quick overview, a quick explanation of this?
Yes, this is the closeout for B1, B2, and it is um, bringing the district four and a half million dollars in savings on the project. That number has been verbally verified by the construction audit, the independent, our performance auditor, Moss Adams. And um, yeah, so it's a celebration.
What are, where does the fourth? Okay, that goes right back into our bond issue, right back into our little kitty, I guess, right?
Yes, ma'am.
That's good news. Okay, Dr. Stern, any comments or questions?
No, I don't.
Mr. Margot?
No, just thrilled to uh, watch four million dollars go from here to there.
Mrs. Wells?
I have no comments, thank you.
I agree with Mr. Margot, thank you, Mr. Raymer, any question or, no, okay. All right, so let's call for the question, uh, Mr. Raymer?
Yes.
Dr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Margot?
Yes.
Mrs. Wells?
Yes.
And Mrs. Marcus is a yes, so it passes four and oh with the provisional, five and oh vote.
And I just wanted to thank Pam and and the team and TCDS and Pro West and everybody out there who built a building during COVID, and still was able to come in uh, under budget.
And it looks beautiful.
Yes, it does, and I know the students are enjoying it, I know that they're really loving the space, and it's fantastic, and so let's look forward to B3 and B4, and similar results, and El Rodeo. Okay, uh, board policies, we have a first reading of a board policy three one hundred, which, uh, I've lost my.
I'll make a motion for the approval of the first reading of board policy thirty-one hundred.
Thank you, I'll second the motion. And any discussion?
I just had one question, Wade, sorry to make you get up, I wish there was a catwalk for you, or one of those air- airport things that you can just stand on and.
I I need the steps, so it's correct.
Um, anyway, so I was tempted to actually waive the first reading and go to a second reading tonight, but then I I didn't get a chance to ask. The, I I'd rather wait for the budget, um, the next budget report, and to see how this increase would affect outlying years.
Okay.
So I I believe the budget's coming soon, correct?
Uh, the December seventh meeting.
December seventh, so so, uh, maybe I'll just get the question answered before our next meeting to see if there's, because I'm sure by then you'll have it worked out.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
And this deals with a change in the reserve from twenty-five to thirty percent, just in case anybody is wondering what the policy was going to be about.
And I think we're at thirty percent now.
Huh?
We're at thirty percent now, correct?
We're at twenty-five right now, oh, we're at.
The policy is at twenty-five, but our actual funds are at thirty.
Thirty, right.
So we kind of want to lock it in, I think is what we're saying.
Yeah. Okay, uh, uh, item seventeen A is a discussion item, the Beverly Hills.
We need, we need to take the vote.
Well, we have to take a vote, I've read, uh, all those in favor of the that, uh, Mr. Raymer?
Yes.
Uh, Dr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Margot?
Yes.
Uh, Mrs. Wells?
Yes.
And Mrs. Marcus is a yes, it passes with a four and oh vote, provisional vote makes it five and oh. Okay, um, discussion item, discussing the Beverly Hills High School ranking components and options to increase ranking, and I believe that you called to have this put on the agenda, uh, Mr. Margot, if you want to.
I I did, and I know, uh, Mr. Seaman is going to present some stuff, but I did, um, you know, there's little things that that the board can do um, outside of the most important factor, which is proficiency. Student proficiency is the first thing, the the first line of defense in in raising our rankings, right? Um, how well our students are excelling um, from K-12 is a real indication, and I know we're constantly working hard, especially coming out of the pandemic, to address these academic issues, potential academic losses, and try to move our students forward. Um, but there are a couple of things in doing a deep dive, and we haven't, we don't talk about this stuff a lot, but that the board can affect changes um, in some of the things that we do at our high school for, um, to improve our rankings. Um, rankings, rankings may or may not be important to people individually, but as a collective, they are. And if we're continuing to be compared, and people make their choices to move into our city because of our school district, then we'd like to have the data to back it up, and we'd like to be able to say, yeah, it's a, you made a good choice, you know, we are a high, highly ranked school district. And we've been floundering in that area, I believe, for a while. Um, there was talk several years ago of doing a uh, four-year college application to Cal State for All in high school, those kids that did not apply to four-year schools, to get them to apply, we we had felt that that would be a good avenue. It never got off the ground, but it was discussed, and that is something that does affect rankings. So what I kind of wanted, um, Mr. Seaman to do tonight is take us through a little bit of, quickly, of what affects rankings and what we can do to affect those rankings ourselves, and are we doing everything we can as a district um, within policy, within our our purview as board members, to um, create that environment? That we may be set to have higher rankings, but we're missing a couple of elements. So why not address those and see if we can improve ourselves, um, while we have a chance?
Well, I think one of the things that I, I raised this a long time ago, was what are the criteria in the rankings? And that's what we are supposed to really be zeroing in on, so I think that's what.
Sorry, uh, technical difficulty, I apologize. Yeah, thank you, uh, Mr. Margot, and.
Sir.
Sorry, here we go. All right, uh, in front of you, I just uh, was able to provide the Board of Education with some documents to consider, like President Marcus had stated. What are the criteria? When people are alluding to the US News and World Report rankings, um, in addition to in previous presentations from ed services, we also talked about new things that you have to consider as a Board of Education, as the College of Career Readiness indicators, that the California Department of Education will also start doing their own ranking system through the California dashboard. So really, now we're not just looking at a single set of uh, information or six data points in which the US News and World Report uses. We need to start considering the co- uh, the CCRIs as well in this conversation. And so what I hope to do is kind of walk through, um, and and just having, showing some really honest data points for us to be able to consider in this conversation. So there are six points in which the US News and World Report do use to be able to rank us. And it is a calculation system, it's not as simple as, oh, you have seventy-six percent of your students meter exceed state standards, as what we would like to think so. So the first and foremost is, you can see that, and this is on page two of your US News and World Report packet, it's a staple packet that I provided you. It's, uh, that one right there. So if you go ahead and go to page two, and you are able to see, starting with the bold, the college readiness. So that's thirty percent of the overall score that we will receive, and I'll show you our current rankings and our scores in a second. But that is for any student in BHHS that has access and takes an advanced placement course. So let's think about this, so thirty percent of us, our score is, a student has to be able to take the course plus the exam and score a three or higher to get a high ranking or a high percentage of that thirty percent.
In one class only.
In, well, one class, so for us, for them to take the AP course is exciting, because we're having students have access to college-level curriculum. For them, US News and World Report, they have to sit for the exam, and they have to score three or higher. And that's where we go back to wanting to look at our test scores of students that have scored three or higher, one, applaud, and then those that score a two or a one, why? What was it, a part of the curriculum or our program that did not allow success for that student? So that's thirty percent of the score. Within that same realm, then an additional ten percent is added to that score based on kids that then took multiple APs, not the class, again, the test. Meaning we love that they took the class for their transcript in college admissions, they have to sit for the exam. They have to sit for their exam and score three or higher. So there's forty percent of our overall ranking is determined purely on students taking the AP exam and scoring a three or higher. So that's forty percent. Then you jump into the next. Then you jump into the next two bullet points, which is an additional 40%, almost meets it, where it is the state standard. Who met and exceeded in math and in ELA? Now, the first full 10 point, which is the third on there, 20% is just who met or exceeded state standards. Simple calculation. That's where it says 78%. What is it compared to our state and national, though? And that's how they calculate that 20%. It's not just a, hey, you got a 78, you rank here. It's, you have a 78 compared to your surrounding districts, your surrounding state and then you nationally. Then from there, they take an additional 20 points after they've seen you meet and exceeds, and they start to break it apart by subgroups. So, they start to look at students of low socioeconomic, so Title I students within our district and how they scored on our state assessment, to other subgroups like black students, to students with disabilities. That's an additional 20. So, when we have in the past had this conversation, we used to just look at our CASP scores as, well, that would be the easy fix. It isn't the easy fix because it's technically only 20% of the overall score for the U.S. News &amp; World Report. So, you'll also see the underserved student population or performance, which is 10%. And then last but not least is our overall graduation rate. And that's one of the things that we know that we're pretty successful at in Beverly Hills as our kids do graduate. We do have a lot of services and support. So, that's how that 100% stacks up. Now, something else that really is important for you to consider is if you turn to page three, and this is what happens. If you remember, CASP for us as a state was normalized two years ago. So, it was a new assessment. And for those that were on the Board of Education for many years, we used to use a, what's, it was a three-letter code. It was previous to me. But where we were ranked, like an ADI code, and it was a three-digit code, and that's how you're ranked within your state. And that was removed in 2016 when the CASP exam came into play. However, if you read, and I just want to highlight before, the methodology for U.S. News &amp; World Report cannot be compared to previous years because they changed the ranking source. So, when you actually look at this, you cannot look and compare from 2019 and earlier. And our 2021 ranking is based off our 2019 scores. They changed the way that they actually ranked and scored us. So, when people in the community or anybody will say, well, in 2016, we may have scored here. There was a total different mythology for scoring then than it is today. So, you cannot do an apples-to-apples, similar to CASP. Over the four years' time when we were doing kind of a cross-comparison, they're normalizing the actual assessment itself, smarter balance. And so, now we actually have a normalized assessment to be able to use. And here, it even clearly states that U.S. News &amp; World Report, they have their mythology normalized. And so, now from the 2019 data on, is where we can start to cross-compare us, just as an FYI. So, that's the U.S. News &amp; World Report. So, here is us. So, remember, we're, this is the 2021 rankings that were just released, but the information is from 2018, 2019. So, it's about a two-year lag that we're judged off of from back then. So, when you look, in total, high schools nationally, we're in the top 6%. So, we're ranked 1,116th. For California schools, we're still in the top 6% with ranking 164th. And then in LA County, which is interesting because you look at how many schools are in California and then look at how many are actually in our county, it's almost half of, well, a third of the schools, high schools are in our county alone. We're in the top 11%. So, this is the overall. When you start to look at those six categories, how that actually stacks up for us both nationally and state. So, when you want to start having conversations like we do right now around what is it that we're doing or what can we really focus on? This is some of the data that we want to kind of crunch and consider. And then I'm going to jump into the AP data. This is an additional item that over time, we've discussed numerous within the education services updates. So, even though this is on 1819 data, our ranking for 2021, what do we have control over today is what we're doing currently. And so, looking at our 2021 data versus our 2122 data, because we'll know in a year or two that'll start to rank us. So, when you look at our overall total population, the way that this is set up is I polled total number of students in the school. So, if you look at 2021, there's 1,240 students. At the end of the year, we had 378 students actually take the AP course. However, only 236 of them, I just lied to your face, 325 of them actually sat for the exam. So, one, there's a discrepancy between the number of kids taking the course and kids taking the exam. And then two, the other number is only 26% of our students took an AP exam. That's where that number is a bit crippling when you look at some of the schools that are above us on that ranking. A lot of them are charter, a lot of them are selective enrollment. Those are true statements. But when you look at something like Harvard-Westlake, where it's a graduation requirement, where they all have access to that, that's where this conversation could possibly maybe unfold.
Can I also add something too? Because I think this is important when we do get this question. Is that even people at home, you know, think about your own students, the ones that have graduated? Because what's helpful for us is just reflecting back on your own students' experience here in the district. Because what's helpful to us is even finding out, like, well, what, you know, that maybe your child, you know, took an AP class but didn't sit for the test. Like, so it's helpful for us to know why that happened or why a student didn't take an AP class. So, it's just, it's helpful for us to know, and so people even at home, to think about the experience that your own child had here so that we know how to improve our rankings and certainly why maybe it's somebody that didn't know an opportunity existed.
Hello?
I think the sound. We're back.
Okay.
Yeah, I apologize. I just wanted, one more thing is also, some of the things that we need to consider is our College of Career Readiness indicators. And I added that to, you've seen this multicolored sheet that's in front of you as well a couple of times. During the pandemic, we had the opportunity to be able to start working with a College of Career Readiness Indicator Committee at the high school level with Mr. Mead and Mr. Catral and our math and ELA department chairs to try to start whittling away at each of these points because this is another area that we will have data points published on behalf of our high school and our district as well. So, just wanted to be able to provide that information to you as well in this conversation.
Okay, going around. Great presentation, thank you. Dr. Stern?
Thank you so much for the research and the background knowledge. It really is, it really shows that it's, this is one critical factor is, we have these great, you know, these kids who are signing up for the AP classes. They're engaging in them. I have no doubt they are quality content and pedagogy. And a number of them just aren't sitting for the exam. Now, obviously, we're not going to force that. We're not going to force them to take that test. But I wonder if there is a missing link between the parent knowledge base of, you know, one, the importance of it, and two, guiding them a little more so that they can go in with the expectation jointly with their child. You know, one of the reasons why you're doing this is so you can have this amazing culminating experience, and that is to take the exam. So, I wonder if there is some sort of partnership lapse that's going on with our ability to harness the parents so that they feel primed to, you know, perhaps more, better make their child, their student be interested in taking that exam. So, I feel like that might be the missing piece, perhaps.
Thank you. Mr. Margot?
I apologize. Can I add one more thing, Mr. Margot? I'm sorry. In your packets, too, are examples of some ways that some of the Boards of Education, meaning Palo Alto, has influenced some of this. Dr. Stern had mentioned not only the parent education and knowledge piece, but alluding towards a little bit of like, maybe we can require the assessment. You know?
It's not far from my thought process as well.
And then also, when you look at the CASP exam, is what's the carrot, what's the incentive for junior student? Where, if you look at like a Palo Alto currently, they have in, within their Golden State honors. So, to be an honor student from Palo Alto, you have to meet or exceed state standards in the 11th grade CASP exam. It's no longer that you can just receive straight A's across the board. You also have to perform on behalf of the institution. So, you'll see those things. That's why I'm sharing those with you as well. I apologize, I just wanted you guys to see that.
Mr. Margot?
Dustin, thank you. So, you say you can't force, or you said you can't force kids to take AP tests. I say you can. And I say that if we want to be the district that we keep saying we're going to be, kids should want to take the AP class. They should be ready for it when they get to high school, and they should want to take them, not to improve our rankings, but to challenge themselves. Because in the end, that's what's going to better their education.
And Mr. Margot, so, and Mr. Seaman and I come from two different school districts, but we came from school districts that actually paid for the test for, so that students didn't even have to think about that part of it.
That's, and we talked about that, just like we do for the PSAT. And I'm going to circle back to this in for a question. College applications, does that affect us in anywhere in rankings or College of Career Readiness? Is there anything about that?
Nope. So, that's our College and Career Readiness indicators. So, part of the California dashboard, you're going to see clearly the four-year A through G readiness number. And it's a dial that's going to indicate. So, that could possibly influence the U.S. News &amp; World Report down the road. Because when you see their data sources, it's from our CDE dashboard. And that's why I wanted us to look at both documents. Is, they flipped the script on us in 2019. And I, now that the California Department of Education adopted the College and Career Readiness indicators, we have about a two-year implementation cycle that I could see U.S. News &amp; World Report again. Because remember, we're looking at antiquated data judging today. That in two years' time, they can say, well, you, your four-year college admissions process or your A through G requirement, you know, those things may impact this.
There was a very unique article in the LA Times recently. It was a teacher, a high school teacher in Los Angeles that stopped giving points to kids. He did not dock kids points if they didn't do homework. He didn't dock them if they were late. It was about where the kids are, not where the kids weren't. And he is getting much more success because the students are working to something as opposed to finding, where am I going to get dinged for this? Where am I going to get dinged for that? It's a distraction. So, that being said, things that I will throw out there for consideration, and I hope that are, we can consider as a board, implementing these because they would have to eventually become graduation requirements if that is the case. But everybody applies to a four-year college. So, doesn't mean you have to go. It means you have to apply and get accepted. Is that correct, Mr. Seaman?
Correct.
Okay. So, we are not committing anybody to go to a four-year college. We are asking them, you've had a great education here in Beverly Hills. Please apply to a four-year college. In fact, if you don't want to, we'll pay for that application, okay? That's a small impact on an annual budget, especially because the size of our senior class is dwindling. So, now, if all, if all this works out, by the way, it's going to go up again. Second thing is, AP classes. Me personally, I don't think we should give grades in AP classes. I think the AP test should be the grade in the class. And I think that the students, and because all they will work for, if we want them to take a test and they want to get an A or a B in the class, they take the test. So, you go into the class with that in mind. And there's no, what there's, it's all it is, much like a college class. It's not about the little assignments all along. It's usually about one or two big assignments for the year. You go, you listen to lectures, you write a couple of papers, there's your class. Kids shouldn't get dinged in an AP class if they understand the material. Because if they understand the material, they'll succeed on the AP test. I think this is something they need to consider. Now, I can't manage that part of it, but you can make an AP test a requirement for high school graduation. You said Harvard-Westlake does it?
Yep, there's, there is, yep. A lot of Board.
There's schools that, there's schools that are doing this. So, these are things that we can do as a board by looking at our graduation requirements. Now, I understand, I think Dr. Stern said, not everybody is going to be able to take it. So, just like all of our other graduation requirements, they will be subject to closer scrutiny depending on students. And I understand that. But if we begin creating a culture where students, without even knowing it, when they go to high school, AP classes are nothing to them. It's just like any other class. And that, by the way, starts in kindergarten or TK, as we will find out. But for now, and you took the rankings down, we should have a goal, right? We have goals for our students. We have, in the strategic plan, we have goals and increases in performance and results. We should have a goal as a district. You gave a 6% national ranking, 6% state ranking, and top 11 for county.
Correct.
We should try to get under 5. Of course, we want to be one, but, you know, it's a pendulum and we have to move slowly. Or it moves slowly, we want to move fast. So, we should, we should absolutely shoot for, let's get under, under the 6% to 5% or under 5% nationally, state, and county, under 10% in the top 10% of schools. That's the goal next to go for. And if we make these simple changes, if we help kids apply to four-year colleges, if we get more kids taking the AP exam, even if we have to pay for it, I don't think it's, I don't, for me, I would never understand why somebody would take an AP class and not take the exam because you don't get the college credit without the exam part. So, if it all hinges on the exam, I'm saying, let it all hinge on the exam. You take the exam, you get a 3 on the exam, you get a B in the class, you get a 4 or 5, you get an A in the class, end of story. You know, make it easy. Done, done, that's it. Why, nobody gets a C in an AP class, right? And then if you don't, and if you don't get a 3 or a 4, you can work that out. I don't want to dictate all that. I'm making suggestions. I'm having a conversation of things that we can be proactive about as a board because colleagues, the graduation requirements do come through us. They're part of board policy. That's why we would need to vet this out and see if we can get this implemented. But I don't want people out there going, oh, my God, they're going to make us do more stuff. They're going to make us do more stuff. No students, we're not going to make you do more stuff. We're actually going to help you all along this way. And at the end, we're all going to be better for it. Everybody's going to benefit from this. And once again, it starts with proficiency, and it starts with proficiency down below in elementary school. So, that's where we have to capture this. We have to make sure our fifth graders can write because right now, we have fifth graders going to middle school that can't write a paper. And I don't know why they're going to middle school. So, this is where we start changing the culture of our district to the way we envision it, right? We all envision this amazing school district. We're going to have buildings coming online in the next three years. They're going to look incredible. Let's be the school district that deserves to be in those buildings. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Wells?
Well, if I understand correctly, I, do we have an understanding of why the students don't sit for the AP exam?
That's what we're trying to unpack a little bit. So, we're doing small case studies. Like, I do know of a student that has a couple AP courses that is choosing not to sit for the exam. Predominantly, it happens with the senior class a lot. They have the AP course on their transcript. They're gaming the system a little bit. So, I think the knowledge, the parent knowledge piece of like instituting an AP night for our parents, maybe. I believe we had something like that many, many years ago in the district. It just kind of faded off. But I, we do see our, through our case studies, tends to be some of the seniors because they know that they will have made their decision, been accepted by May 1st. The exams aren't until the first week of May, usually around the 8th.
Right.
So, technically, the second week of May.
I mean, I had a daughter that went to Harvard-Westlake. And I remember, if I remember correctly, they had AP English in their senior year. And it was, that was the class. And they all sat for the exam. And of course, there were those students that said, well, I don't really want to go. And they would sit there and take a nap or what have you during the test. But the test was at school. And it was part of their day. And they also, for the other exams as well, yes, they got a grade in addition to taking the AP exam. So, you know, especially junior year is very taxing on them. They're taking a final exam, plus they're taking the AP exams for those classes. But I do also recall that part of the curriculum But I do also recall that part of the curriculum was that they were preparing them for the exam. And do, you know, they'd sit for a practice exam, or however they would do that, so that it was just a matter of course. That, that they all took that class and they all took the AP test and they all, you know, and they may have had it all, like separate grade as well. Um, and you know, I'm not sure that we need to make their grade in AP, the AP exam. I don't know that maybe that's necessarily what your, your goals are in those classes. But um, I do think making it a matter of course for that class, that they prepare for it, they practice for it, they have a day where they all take it, and then, you know, from there, they do what, with it what they want. I, I do a, a hundred percent support um, making it available if it means trying to find that in terms of a budget to make certain. If we're gonna invest in providing these op, these offerings, I think it's important for us to also give an incentive or make it a matter of course that they go all the way.
Okay.
There have been teachers, Mary, that have done that, where they give you your grade based on how you do on the test. So it, it has been a practice for some teachers, but it wasn't.
They have practice AP exams, don't they, where the kids can see some of the.
Sure, yeah, they do that too. But, but they, I'm just saying that there were certain teachers here that gave grades depending on your score on the AP.
Oh.
But is it in the, is it in their, does it happen at school, in their class? When they take it? So it's on a school day, they take the, the exam and so.
And so, so we, we, it is that, and so, um, because we do have some layered English courses. So I'm gonna use the English as an example that you just used. Not every student takes AP English language or literature. As a 12th grader here, there's English 12 too. So we, we pull those English, uh, AP English literature students out, like into the multimedia center in the swim gym and test them there. So uh, it's not as authentic as it would be maybe at Harvard Westlake where they're just showing up to English that day, taking the assessment.
Right.
Um, we're actually pulling them out for that.
Right.
Because not every student takes it at this time.
Right, I mean, it's a different school.
I mean, but, yeah.
I definitely think it's uh, worthwhile to, to improve that percentage of students taking the test, especially since they're taking, they're going through the curriculum.
Thank you. Now, let's hear from the student about this subject. I'm waiting to hear about your comments, Mr. Rayber.
Thank you. I've got uh, quite a few. First, a couple of questions though. Um, is the volume of students who sit for the exam or the passage rate more important to the ranking?
So you, it, on your uh, page three again, you'll see at the very end, earning your qualifying score is weighted three times more than just taking the exam. So again, it, it really is important about us to increase that score of getting students to sit for the exam. And then really, from us as the adults in the room, being the instructors, is getting the students prepared to give that three or higher. And that gives us technically triple the points in that sense for that category.
Okay.
Yep.
Uh, I, I was also going to, to recommend possibly subsidizing the cost of the AP exams as a way to uh, increase the participation in those exams. Another question I had is, what is an example of a military science or leadership class? And what do we offer that covers that requirement?
We do not. So that would be our OTC at most schools. Um, and we currently in Beverly Hills do not. Uh, in my former district, we had it at two of our schools, um, but we do not here.
Okay.
Yep.
Then, oh, this other one was regarding the, the state seals that Palo Alto has. It, do, does the simple implementation of those seals improve our qualifications? I know that we've talked in the past about implementing them, and I was also curious where in the process we were for their implementation.
Yep, and so um, the, thank you for asking that question. Um, we can geek out for a couple of minutes on the seals. Um, but uh, those three seals, we hope to be able to implement before you graduate. Uh, we're still in the process of just kind of that personnel power of being able to figure out how exactly how we're tracking this, previous year's data, and then being able to pull together in a pretty little package. In addition, um, through this conversation, knowing that this conversation was uh, posted, um, looking at bringing a similar board policy like you see in front of you from Palo Alto, Palace Verdi's has one on uh, the seal by literacy. Um, these are important because if you look at the honors one, one of the things is, is that they have to meet or exceed in this uh, casp exam. So that's part of that. Remember that 20% of just meet or exceed state standards? Some of our kids, we have to fight and track down to get to take the 11th grade casp exam. Now, we might have an additional carrot to dangle around. You can't earn an honors diploma without meeting or exceeding state standards on the 11th grade casp. Also, in the seal by literacy that we had mentioned before too, is we have such a drop. So we have so many students in our world language program, but then we have 12 kids that for the AP Spanish class. Or nine, or nine, you know, 11 kids for the AP French exam. But we had, you know, 120 kids coming in in Spanish too. So how did we get from 120 to 12? And that's some of the things that we're trying to unpack. But that's why the seal by literacy is such a great idea for the board to adopt. That way, it's another carrot and another opportunity that we can offer to our students at graduation and award their successes. So again, trying, trying to use a positive reinforcement in this approach too.
Fantastic. Um, now I wanted to get into, to some of the things that Mr. Margot brought up. Um, while I do agree with the idea of subsidizing the cost of the test, as I said before, I completely disagree with basing the entire class grade on the AP uh, score. Uh, you did mention that some teachers base their scores off of the exam, but in my experience, those uh, teachers that do base the score off the exam, it can never harm your grade. It can only help. Uh, it's been that if you get a four or a five, then if they, you will be raised one letter. Or if you get a five, then you will get an A, but that is also, uh, if, if you get a two, your grade will not drop from where it is. If you have an A and you get a four, you will not drop to a B. So I think that's an important distinction to make. Uh, and I'd also say that there are, we're trying to teach students to understand material, not to be excellent test takers. And I think that if we decide to uh, have the entire grade for an AP exam uh, linked directly to the test, we would essentially just be teaching students how to be good at taking tests rather than fully understanding the material. Even though the uh, comprehension of the material is extremely important to success on AP exams, I know that from personal experience, I am much better at doing projects throughout the year to demonstrate my understanding of material than taking tests. I, but I also have friends who are the opposite, who are extremely good test takers, uh, and then will not do a lot of the other work as they know that they can subsidize their grades with the tests. So I'd caution that before making a decision to switch to grades based on AP exams. And then for some further reasons why people may not take AP exams. Uh, one, the college board does provide uh, certificates of merit to students who take a certain number of AP exams and to maintain a certain average score. I believe it's above 3.5 or above four. Um, and if you take a test and score lower than a three, then your average may go down and you may not be eligible for one of those merit uh, certificates that you can then put on your college applications in the future, which is a further incentive of taking the AP exams, but not if you believe that you will do poorly. Uh, and also, some schools still won't accept certain AP exams for college credit or will only accept a five. And if you are not confident you will get a five, then you say, why would I put myself through the rigors of studying if I'm doing well in the class already, I had a good time, I understand the material, but I don't believe that I can score a five and don't want to put myself through the increased stress of studying and, and sitting for an AP exam? I mean, I, I took AP chemistry, uh, but did not sit for the exams. I did not believe that I would uh, succeed to, to the level that I hope I would. Um, so yeah, that's my opinion on, on those matters.
I, I appreciate you addressing those, Eli. My suggestion was only a suggestion as an incentive to try to get uh, students to take the exam, not to forego learning in the class, obviously. Um, that's, it, it should always be learning for learning sake, not learning for testing sake. So I agree with you about that. Um, I just, it, it pains me to hear that people would sit through an entire year of an AP class and choose not to take the exam. They're almost, you know, for, for whatever reasons that they're doing it. Um, it, it's, it shows that they're, they're in it for something else other than I think that the learning for learning sake, uh, you know. If it, you know, affects their, their certificate, if it, whatever it does, or colleges don't take that. I was, I was told that uh, not yet, there's software that tells you, or college board. The college board has, tells you whether the classes are accepted at whatever school. So before you take a class, you can always check to see if they're accepting it and if they ha, if they have a history of accepting those credits and, and if it's a three, four, or five. So I think there's avenues that before kids take AP classes, maybe they do a little more research on it, um, understanding what they're getting into. But you know, I still would advocate, you're gonna take an AP class, you sign a contract that you're gonna take the test. And if you can't pay for it, we'll pay for it. I think, I think, you know, you, we have to, don't we want to graduate the kind of students that are gonna challenge themselves and gonna say, I'm gonna try to get that five. I don't care what it does. I don't care if I get a four. I'm gonna try to get that five, no matter what happens. And that, that's, for me, sitting here as a board, that's the kind of student I want to see graduating from Beverly. You know, whether they get the three, four, or five anyway, I want that to be the attitude that drives our students in all aspects. And I still think at least every student should take an AP class while they're here. I don't, I, you know, every, everyone that can with, with respect to uh, certain students who, it's just not for them. But I think way more students can be taking the class and taking the test that are doing that. And they're in supporting not only their education, but supporting our rankings in the process.
Thank you. I have, well, I haven't spoken yet, so I'm going to take this opportunity. Um, I would like to know, of the students who don't take the exam, they take an AP class, have you ever done a survey of those kids to find out exactly why they don't? Have you any facts on, or any numbers on why they don't? Is it money? Is it that they don't need it? Uh, what, well, what are the reasons that they don't take the AP exam?
Nope, we haven't done a formalized study. We've just done case studies. So we've interviewed individual students that we know that have taken multiple APs or taken an AP course and chosen not to sit for the exam. Um, sometimes it is a financial obligation. They say, you know, they may not meet our free and reduced lunch program and they may not have chosen to pay for four exams. They wanted to pay for the two that they knew that they'd be the most successful at.
I mean, I just would like to know because I think that's, if we're going to try and I, I, as, I think one of the things that I, as a community member, hear most from people about the schools, why don't our schools do better than they do? Why are we so low in the ranking? And you know what I actually tell them? I said, you first of all, you have to know what the criteria. And I tell them, one of the basic criterias, and I'm gonna be very honest, is that our kids do not go on to four-year colleges. And I say, I, you know, and then I say, you know, I don't care if your student doesn't go to the four-year college. I want him to apply to know that we are meeting our goals to educate him. And we don't know that when they don't go on to the four-year college and they don't apply to a four-year college. I recently, uh, have a friend whose son, and this is not exactly the same. He's at, he's at Santa Monica CC. And I said to him, uh, didn't you apply? Well, he found out that he got into UCI. He got into UC Santa Barbara, and he got into one of the other UC campuses. He chose not to go. Okay, that's okay. For whatever reason, he chose not to go, but he got in. And that's the, what I want. I want to know that my students coming out of high school can apply to a four-year college and can get in. And that's what I'm missing it, from what I, that's my feeling. So um, and I, I understand the AP classes and, and I, I would, I'd say, why would anybody sit in an AP class for, without, and get all the information and then not take the exam? But now I hear that they don't, it doesn't matter, uh, that they, the teacher doesn't give them credit, whatever. I'm hearing some things of the reason. So maybe we need to look at our own faculty as to what's going on with the faculty member. Maybe this is something that we've got a problem right here in our own backyard. I don't, I don't know. So I just, uh, I personally, my feeling is I want to know that every kid coming out of Beverly Hills High School can get into a four-year college, whether or not they go there. And I want to know that they've applied. And that's another problem. It's the application process. The kids don't want to bother with it. They don't want to even try. We need, maybe get some more in that respect.
We have a very robust college center.
I know we do. We, we have a wonderful college, but the kids are not applying to the four-year college.
But, but I think.
Because it had a requirement.
And that's why this, it, this is a very important conversation because I think what, what you've just articulated is that, that everybody has a responsibility in what our ranking is, including our parents and including our staff, including our administrators, including our students. And it is owning it. But everybody understanding, and I like the idea of some parent education too because, you know, they're the first ones to, to talk to us about rankings, but yet, you know, when they look at their own kids and their own uh, progress of their own kids, you know, they'll, they'll share that they're not sure why their, that their child didn't take, but we'd love to know why.
Right. And if I could say, it's a partnership, obviously, to use a cliche, but it's a partnership with the parents. Um, I think that there's been, in the last two years with the pandemic, there's been a tremendous amount of responsibility that has been, you know, put upon us, um, trying to clean up the mess of the pandemic and all that. Not that the parents aren't, you know, doing a lot of work as well. But for something that requires pulling yourself up, you know, and, and doing something that, it really takes perseverance and seeing the sights um, in, on the long term, um, it really does absolutely require the parents. You know, we can do, we can do so, only so much. When the kid goes home, he, he or she needs to know that um, it is something that is important uh, for the culture of their family. Or, and uh, we, we can't just only incentivize them.
Okay, well, I'm going to.
I just wanted to say one other comment before you wrap up.
What?
I wanted to add something before you wrap up.
About what?
About this topic.
Okay.
Um, I would say that, um, what I'm hearing you talk about tonight is that there's, there's a lot to be learned about why the students are not taking either the AP exams or, or applying for the colleges. And I, I do think it's worthwhile to uh, explore that on a, on a bigger level, a broader level, I should say. Um, and I wouldn't lose sight of what the student's experience is because I think another piece of this may be, you know, and Eli probably could speak to this better than any of us, is we think of these things in silos and the student experiences, they're trying to be competitive. They're doing applications. They're taking final exams. They're trying to figure out strategically what AP exams they take, which ones they don't, so that they are um, presenting themselves in the best light. And sometimes it's, you know, the tests can fall very close together. They only have so much bandwidth. So I think it's also looking at the total student experience that allows them to be successful to do those things. Because what you don't want to do is just pile on and then have them be forced to not be as successful of a applicant as they can be in terms of applying to colleges. And I think that's an important piece for them. And so, uh, you have to look at that piece as well. That's all I would say.
Which is why I would advocate um, for starting with looking at one AP class per student. You know, there's different sets of the rankings, whether they take one or whether they take more. And let's see how we can work that in and get it going. I would like to give direction to Dr. Breggy and his staff to further explore both the college application and AP process here in conjunction with um, budget and managing, um, you know, what the effect that it has obviously on policy. And then come back to us with that.
Sure. I, I think that also, not a popular thing to say, but you know, there's a culture piece on, on, on our staff as well, where we have some staff that are uh, much more welcoming about a student getting an AP experience. Um, there, versus is, is some staff that, that may talk a student out of an AP experience. Um, and that, that happens. And so there's, I know a lot of pressure on uh, AP teachers and, and what their scores are. Uh, but that culture is shifting now to a student having a better experience being exposed to an AP course versus, you know, somebody that you know is going to get a five. You know, that student that does get a three is gonna get a much better exposure and experience in that class versus a different level.
And then like I said, if we start early, then there'll, there'll be more students wanting to do this.
Well, and I'm gonna piggyback off Dr. Breggy too, is when you look at some of the schools that have open access policies for advanced placement courses, you'll see also a change in the grade point average. And so that's another thing that the Board of Education does drive is um, currently right now, our honors and our AP both sit at a full GPA point boost. So sometimes a student may choose to take the honors versus the advanced placement so they don't have to take the assessment versus, you know, when you see open access schools, they'll have a full point for the advanced placement and only half a point for the honors. So they differentiate between, so again, that positive reinforcement for the work that you're putting in. An honors class, you just sit for the final semester exam. An AP course, you're really gearing up for a college board assessment. So this is another thing that we, we will hope to vet out.
I heard that LACIS doesn't have honors. They have APs and regular classes.
Yeah, so selective enrollment schools, that's part of their requirement is that they are part of the advanced placement process. Otherwise, they are no longer in attendance.
Yep.
So when you look at some of those schools that are ahead of us in our region.
It'd be much more strategic than, than we are in their rankings because it is, those are game changers to how rankings, uh, you know, are, are scored.
Well, I think we want the students to be successful too, so there may be students. there may be students that, that they are appropriate for that honors class. You want them to be able to get what they can get to, you know, get a maximum credit for stepping up to those different levels. So I think we talked about having many different pathways for many different students, and we don't want to lose that, so there's a balance in there somewhere.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Can I say one more thing?
Great presentation, great discussion.
May I say one more thing? I think the idea of starting AP classes earlier is great, and I love to see the addition of AP human geography and such. But I'm not exactly sure, or at least we haven't seen as of yet, if it will have the direct effect of more classes in the future, especially since if a student doesn't have the best time in an AP class, their freshman year, they may be even less likely to take one in further years. So that, I think that's a, a trade-off, and that goes also with changing the, the culture that we talked about, in that there are some who will purposefully try to scare students away from AP classes and, and root out certain students that they, they believe should not be in AP classes. But I think those kind of go both hand in hand, is starting earlier and changing the culture will eventually lead to increased participation long-term. But starting earlier currently may also lead to-
And then you have the math development program trying to dummy down the maths with taking it out of the-
We're not going to dummy down anything here.
Yeah. All right. Anyway, thank you so much.
Thanks, Dustin.
Okay, it's time for communications from the board members. Dr. Stern?
I, I just found this very delightful. I, I found this in the Courier, and I just want to mention, Gabriel, Max, Roy, and Sina from Beverly Vista Elementary School, they were caught being good. They did something very sweet that a lady wrote about. I don't know if anyone caught this, but I guess a, a lady was in her electric wheelchair. She was riding around, she, and she had some relatives who were visiting from out of state. And she stopped these four boys who were trick-or-treating, sorry, this is Halloween night, and said, "Where'd you get all the candy?" My grandchildren weren't able to find any. And the, the, these four kids from Beverly Vista Middle School said, "Oh, well, why don't we give you some of our candy?" And they each took their candy, and they, they put it into her little basket. And, and then they said, "Oh, we're, we're so happy to, you know, please share it with your grandchildren." And so anyway, I thought that was nice. Yeah, you did, that our Beverly Vista Middle School kids were upholding some of the-
Some were there, someone, I thought, Be Nice Week or something. There's, one of the schools, I think I saw something about Be Nice.
But they just did it because they were just being nice, and I commend that. Thank you.
Just one more reminder, this weekend, shopping weekend, support the high school PTSA at Century City. It's going on Saturday and Sunday. And looking forward to a fabulous Thanksgiving, high school Thanksgiving festivities next week.
Thank you. Mrs. Wells?
Well, I'd just like to say, welcome to Gabe Halimi, and we really look forward to being a board of five. And we have some good times ahead. Thank you.
Mr. Raymer?
Yeah, also a, a big welcome to Gabe Halimi. I'm looking forward to working with him in the future. Something else, tonight, or today, is National Fried Chicken Sandwich Day. So, if anyone hasn't had dinner yet, here, here's what you're going to do. I know that's what I'm doing, so I wanted to, to point that out.
Mr. Raymer just took the words out of my mouth. I was going to congratulate Mr. Halimi on his selection to the school board, and I look forward to working with him. And I'm looking forward to going to see Hamilton tomorrow night. And with that, I'm going to announce that the next meeting of the school board will be November 23rd. And, and I'm going to adjourn the meeting at exactly 8:30.